Good evening. Welcome to the town of Emmitsburg Town Meeting for Monday, August 21st, 2023. I'll ask in respect to the decorum of the meeting that everyone silences or turns off their cellphones at this time. And now I'll ask that we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we have some items we need to take care of regarding some housekeeping pieces. So first of all, there will be a meeting tonight. Closed meeting, and I'll offer this for the board, so please tune in if you could. At the close of the August 21st, 2023 Town Meeting, the Emmitsburg Mayor and Board of Commissioners intend to meet in a closed session for the purpose of consulting with staff, consultants and other individuals to discuss legal advice. The authority for meeting in closed session for this purpose is permitted by the general provisions Article Section 3-305b Subsection 7, annotated code of Maryland, which authorizes us to meet in closed session to discuss legal advice. The Board of Commissioners will not be meeting in another open session after the closed session has ended. Okay, and that takes care of the first piece. Also, there will be a public hearing tonight. And at that point in time, we'll have a motion to end the public meeting. We'll move into the public hearing and then at the conclusion of the public hearing, we will return to the public meeting. So there are some not irregularities, but some different procedures for tonight's meeting. So here we go. Okay, there are future meetings that include the Board of Commissioners meeting will occur on Monday, September 11th, 2023 at 7:00 PM. That will occur here at the town town office and it will be available via Zoom. Okay, are there any other meetings? Between now and that, the 11th? No? Okay, all right. Well, with that in mind, we move forward. Okay, so I've been advised that there's a discrepancy or concern about it's a discrepancy in July 17th, 2023 meeting minutes, so we will only look to seek approval for the June 5th, 2023 meeting minutes and the July 10th, 2023 meeting minutes. Are there any modifications or suggestions that folks want to hear related to the June 5th meeting? Anybody have any interest in changes there?
No, I just wanted to thank staff for including my comments. I know I brought that up last time, so it looks great. Thank you.
Sure.
Terrific. Okay, is there a motion to accept the June 5th, 2023 Town Commission Meeting Minutes for June 5th, 2023?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second for Commissioner Ritz's motion? Second, thank you. Motion's been made by Commissioner Ritz. It's been seconded by Commissioner Davis. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Anybody against? The motion carries five to zero. Okay, let's turn to the July 10th, 2023 Town Meeting Minutes. Are there any concerns or modifications that folks would like to see related to that?
July 10th?
July 10th, yes.
Um. Yes, I have. Those were the, I'm sorry, those were the ones I was referring.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, no problem. All right, so therefore we're going to reverse that and we're going to say there's a discrepancy potentially in the July 10th, 2023 meetings and therefore let's turn to the July 17th, 2023 minutes. Okay. Is there anyone who wants to see any changes or modifications related to that meeting, the those minutes from the 17th? Nope. Okay, all right. Therefore, is there a motion to accept the meeting minutes as presented for July 17th, 2023? So move. Thank you. Is there a second for Commissioner Sweeney's motion?
Second.
Thank you. Motion's been made by Commissioner Sweeney. It's been seconded by Commissioner Bowman-Palat. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. 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 Anybody against? The motion carries five to zero. All commissioners present. Okay, we now turn to the deputy for the police report. Good evening, deputy. Thanks for being here, sir.
Still myself, that'd be far close. This, the month of July, we had five annual days for the one same day. No promotions or transfers. Special assignments for party on the fourth day. No fleet issues at all. No vehicle issues at all. We had 184 calls for service or criminal arrests. Fifty-one traffic stops and we completed eighteen wind parts. And there are still concerns on Irish Town Road for speeding and we're looking into some driveways that we get permission for.
Is there any questions for the deputy? Yes, ma'am.
I know there was a concern from just outside town on 140, the speed limit going up towards Pennsylvania and if extra radar could be set up there occasionally as well.
Yeah, I sent you an email. I ran, that is a state road, so as far as changing the speed, whether we'll have to get in touch with the state and I could try to help with that.
Right, yeah.
Okay. But yeah, definitely.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Deputy, I did have one inquiry asking for coverage on Annandale Road between the Doughboy and the Split Mountain View. Their concern relates to large trucks moving what they feel is above the speed limit. So, so food for thought. Thank you, sir. Okay, thank you. And hello to the junior deputy. Okay, we move on. Okay. We turn now to the town manager for the town manager's report.
Good evening. This is the town manager's report for June. I highlight some key areas related to streets outside of the normal daily and monthly duties, such as the monthly storm drain inlet cleaning and street sweeping and repairing streetlights. Staff mode, the weeds and the curbs and the developments. They also weed ate and weed killed East Lincoln Walkway. Related to parks, staff removed a broken speed bump on Community Park Road. They trimmed trees around Eugene Myers Park Playground Equipment, repainted the park benches in the, in Community Park. They weed ate and we killed around the bridge in the same park. They also installed the new bat helmet racks and dugouts at ball in the field number three, four, and five in Memorial Park. Staff installed the 20 new storybook signs along the walking trail. They also cleaned out invasive trees, bushes and weeds at the farmer's market lot by Southgate. They also assisted with preparation for Community Heritage Day. Related to water, at the time of this report in June, we were at the spillway level of 16.6 feet. If everybody recalls, we implemented phase one water restrictions. They are still in place. Unfortunately, we're not seeing any changes in the flow to town. We just encourage everybody to do their part. It is voluntary, but every little bit helps. The lake has come up a little bit, about three tenths of an inch. So yeah, if everybody can do their part and help conserve water, you know, we would greatly appreciate it. Highlighted the well levels, water production and consumption. We produced an average of 248,269 gallons per day and consumed an average of 254,686 gallons per day. The amount of backwash water in the month of June was approximately 15.02%. We purchased 178,450 gallons of water from Mount St. Mary's in the month of June. Due to the PFOS levels at Mount St. Mary's, the town has halted obtaining water from Mount St. Mary's until further notice. I know that we notified the board of such, so there will be no usage in the month of July or August until some changes are made at Mount St. Mary's. Related wastewater, we treated and out treated an average of 261,302 and again, we consumed 254,686 gallons per day. That meant we were at a negative 0.72% wild water in the month of June. That's a great job, great job by staff. We had no spills of untreated sewage in June and we did not exceed the exceed the plant's design capacity at any time that month as well. In June, we received 3.1 inches of precipitation. At the end of June, we had a deficit of point of 4.61 inches. That did go up higher in the month of July. Fortunately, we did receive some rain in August. Trash pickup will remain Mondays in the month of August. I listed some of the meetings I attended in June. Most notably, I attended the Creamery Road preconstruction meeting. And I attended the MML Summer Conference. Some noteworthy items, the treatment at the lake is starting to deteriorate due to the lack of rain. Trivida is rising. We're working on adjusting LG Sonic. Staff weed ate and we killed the lot on 277 to Paul Street. If anybody's familiar, that is the house this events investment company tore down. They're not mowing, weeding or anything, so we're pursuing all code enforcement options. Staff and the contractor completed the backwash pond headwall project. The rudders pump station work is complete. We are just waiting on the dedication of the pump and finalization of state permits. MDE issued a fine to the town of Emmitsburg for the sanitic for sanitary sewer overflow in 2020. The fine was less than $1,600. MBE has noted that our overflows are much less frequent with the sewer relining and we'll get better with the new pump station. Continued sewer relining and smart manhole covers, to which Leslie and I stated, had you given us our grant back in 2018, when we first asked, we probably would have a new pump station at this point. So we're getting better. And then that's it. That's the end of my report.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for staff regarding the town manager's report?
Oh, just one quick one. The the mount con, we have a contract with the mount for water.
Yes.
Do we have to buy so much from them a month or is it just a use?
It's a Mac. They they set a minimum, no maximum. They send a maximum of what we have to with that we can use. Right now, we've told them, we sent them a letter, basically said we're ceasing and we're good.
Great. Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for the town manager at this time related to the report? Oh, okay, very good. All right, so we turn now to Commissioner Collins. But first, staff, do we have a sign up sheet for anybody who, for public comments? Okay, um, sir.
Do you want anything on the grant administrator report? Michelle's here. If you.
Sure, why don't we, you know what, I'm I'm going by upfront and I've skipped the town planners report also. So we also hear that. I'm two on that. I'm sorry. So let's go there and then we'll hear about the grants, please.
Okay, okay.
We turn to you. Yes, ma'am.
All right, so during the month of June, I processed eight zoning permits, not six, and 23 cross connection permits. Most of them are high hazard. The planning commission met on July 31st and approved or recommended approval of the tax amendment floating zone and discussed the company's plan. There's no meeting in August. The next tentative date is September 25th. That's the day before election, so we have yet to finalize that date. Some development updates, Federal Stone should get their zoning permit by the end of this week. We have a meeting with them on Thursday to go over payment and performance funds and tax fees. So once we get those, we'll be able to issue the zoning permit. Vision Lakers and Plaza and we're waiting for a date for the developer to have the preconstruction meeting. The Seaton Shine Museum entrance at Daughters of Charity Ministries. The pending item is the deed of easement as of today. It needs approval by the board for stormwater management and it's since it's an agreement between the applicant and the town. So that should be on the agenda for next month. And then the 10 fit out project for Daughters of Charity Ministries. We're sorting out tax fees. Same thing with the Mount St. Mary's School of Health Professions. Yeah, and then for text amendment, mentioned the floating zone. We're holding a public hearing for this today and staff has additional changes which will be presented when we get to agenda number, agenda item number four. And the Silo Hill Basin retrofit for that, a sign will be installed and we're awaiting county approval on as built. And for grants, the CBT Silo Hill Basin retrofit, the final report and close that will be end of this month. I think that's all I got.
Thank you. Any questions for the town planner at this time related to the report? No, okay, great. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay, we now turn to staff for the grant update.
Good evening. This is the grants administrative report for the August 3rd meeting, or 21st meeting, excuse me. And I have 21 active grants right now. Ones I'm going to highlight is the Creamery Road Pump Station Replacement Project. We were supposed demolition supposed to be beginning soon and the bypass installed. However, there's been some back and forth with the contractor because of federal requirements with Build America by America and whatnot. So they're getting those kinks worked out, but hopefully that will be done soon. So any day now. There was a question from a commissioner about the Rainbow Lake parking lot. That is currently in the design phase and the engineer should be finished with that by December 1st, I would think. And then it would go out to bid shortly after. So construction in early spring. The two other bigger infrastructure projects, the DePaul Street Waterline Improvement Project is in the design phase. Construction is estimated to start in January, so that should be finishing up soon and go out to bid this fall. And then the North Eden Avenue Waterline Replacement and Green Street Upgrade is also in the design phase. But that construction, because of the green components and stormwater management components, will not go to construction until summer next year, so July 2024. And then newly awarded grants, I got a $552,500 grant from the Community Development Block Grant, which will go towards the DePaul Street Waterline Project. And I have four pending grants, program open space. The state has said we got the funding, but we have to get official, an official award letter about that. And then upcoming grants to apply for this past. We are the week before last, I applied for money with USDA for parking to replace all of our parking meters on Main Street. And so that's pending right now. And then community parks and playground is due this week also. Are there any questions?
First of all, thank you for all your efforts because this is amazing. You're bringing a lot of money into town and the most recent newly awarded grant is is amazing. So thank you. As far the pending, no pending grants or up, I guess upcoming grants to apply for, are these matching grants or or not matching grants?
They vary. The USDA one was a 45% match and but community parks and playground, there is no match. It's 100% funded.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Davis, do you have a question? Oh, no, somebody done. It's one that Mr. Sweeney did do? No. No, okay, all right. Michelle, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. So Mr. Ritz, thank you for getting us back on track. Okay, hey, here we go. So, which are comments? Commissioner Roman Palat will turn to you.
Wanted to commend staff on the successful national night out and the idea of providing backpacks filled with school supplies is much appreciated because parents are very much aware of how much that can cost as we get our little ones back, ready for back to school. Also, the continued efforts with the pool parties in the farmer mark, farmers markets, especially knowing that those can coincide at the exact same time. So that's no easy feat to juggle. I did have a question from a vendor who wanted to ask if we were able to move forward with Facebook ads advertising the market or is that something we hope to do for next year's market? And then finally, just a quick announcement, everybody's very much aware that back to schools is this week for Frederick County Public Schools and just be mindful of school buses and the kids and crosswalks and kids being in places that they normally aren't early in the morning and around 2:00 to 3:00 PM. Oh. Yes, that is all.
Commissioner Davis. I'd like to thank staff for getting the storybook trail put in and for Matty for getting the grants for that. That's I've been in the park a couple of times and the kids are using that and it's great. So thank you for that. Also with the farmer's market, it looks like the crowds are getting bigger every week. So that's, that's a a big plus and we've made a huge leap there. And thanks for all the work you did getting the the mount freshman party in the park. That was a huge success. And while I was there on Saturday, I went around and spoke to all the businesses and churches that were there and asked them about the idea of doing the town business fair next year with that. And they were really excited about that, that they all want to work together and actually try to provide food and and things like that. So but thank you for putting that together. The the students had a had a great time there and I know that's not an easy task. That's all I got.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Sweeney?
Yeah, I wanted to thank the town for all the, all the and everyone for all their work. They did all the the freshman orientation over here in the park for the mount students. The clubs and stuff all had a good turnout too. We were planning on starting a satellite club, lines club at the Mount St. Mary's and we have 35 kids signing them. So it went pretty well. So thanks for all the efforts to getting that started and that'll help us with the town. They will help out with all the functions we have in the town. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner Ritz.
I just wanted to wish a safe and successful year for all of our returning students and their teachers. And thank you to former Commissioner Blanchard for stepping up to run for commissioner. We know how things go. These people usually wait till the 11th hour, so I might be thanking some other individuals next month, but appreciate it. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. I want to thank staff for the the pool party setup that went very well. It was a smooth operation and very, very well attended. A lot of grateful folks from town came up and wanted to let staff know how much they appreciated what's gone on for the pool this summer. I was able to attend the the Trail Social in the library. That was very well attended. That was a very kind of fun event. I was able to attend the National Night Out. That was definitely enjoyable. It was good to see some commissioners there and be able to talk to folks. And finally, again, hats off to Mr. Death Ridge for the community garden, which is phenomenal. I want to do something that was sort of a departure from what I typically do. I'm going to read a prepared statement. And I don't typically do this and given that I had two meetings where I was absent, I'm throwing in now. Unfortunately, my hope is it will be a reasonable amount of time, so I appreciate your your kindness. So here we are. In the past month, I've been called, emailed, stopped and jubilee and at other functions to discuss the water bill rate changes. It is very clear there's an abundance of misinformation regarding rates and the town's finances. Some basic clarifications. Okay, the general fund is paid for by the taxpayers who live in Emmitsburg. The fund is used to pave streets, to plow snow, to match grants and more. The water fund is an enterprise fund and managed like a business. Water services provided in exchange for payment. Tap fees are also paid to the water fund. When the town seeks funds, it is often the state of Maryland and the federal government who provide loans and grants. Grants are better as they do not need to be repaid. The town often utilizes loans and grants from the US Department of Agriculture to fund water-related infrastructure. The USDA expects municipalities to run their fund, and I quote, "as a sustainable business." Additionally, a 25% reserve fund is expected to be in place to meet the needs of operation and maintenance O and M, they say. When a municipality does not meet these two standards, it can have two outcomes. Federal supervision of town actions, including budgeting and future loan and grant opportunities may be limited. The town suffers in the short term and in the long term. In our near future, Emmitsburg will have to replace water line from the mountain to town. We saw that tonight. We will definitely need financial help in order to not pass this burden onto the community at one time. Grant funding helps sustain that. The trend in town for much of the last decade has been reduced water consumption. Less water was purchased by residences, businesses and institutions. During the same time, resources became more costly, such as chemicals, equipment and staffing. The town government directed by the elected chose to not increase rates during these times of economic uncertainty, such as the pre-pandemic economic downturn and during the pandemic itself. These rate reviews occurred annually and will continue to occur annually. When addressing the repair and replacement of the ancient water system, town finances were analyzed by the USDA and found the water rates and reserve too low. Some of the elected seemed uncomfortable with town staff recommendations. A consultant was tapped and then came back with essentially the same recommendations. They found water rates and reserve too low. As the board investigated methods for meeting the needs for these expenses or of these expenses, it seemed the methods and integrity of town staff were brought into question. The work hours of staff are checked by their supervisors and by professional staff in the town office, including a staff accountant. These numbers are also audited annually by a third-party accounting firm, who is not connected to the town as staff. The board votes to hire virtually each staffer. Can errors occur? Yes. Can cheating occur? Yes. Does it occur? No. Our staff is fastidious and honest. The clarification, the town does not have a $90 million rainy day fund. Oh, that we did. Virtually every cent is used according to the annual budget. The annual budget is framed by the mayor and then accepted or modified and accepted by the board. Moving funds from the general fund to an enterprise fund is not a best accounting practice. One person who contacted me called it a shell game, referring to the con game. If we take the shortcut, the consequences will only be negative. Possible better steps. Let's again involve our state and federal legislators to seek their help with fund sources. Let's consider reestablishing the Water Committee, which was folded into the Citizens Advisory Committee. The Water Committee in a sense was in a way like a watchdog organization of citizens from town and I believe one individual from out of town. Let's continue to aggressively seek grants. You see our successes with Michelle. She is brilliant at what she does. Let's revisit our rate program in three years before the largest rate increase and see if the economic headwinds have ended. Okay, so that's the conclusion of my comments for these things. So I appreciate everyone's patience and with that, I turn to you, Mr. Mayor.
I suppose I'm not allowed to comment because I feel like my moral character was called into question as well.
I tell you what, as I was the speaker and I'll hand this to Mr. Ritz, I'll let Mr. Ritz run it from that point and then I'll hand it over to
No.
No, no, because I, I, but by procedure, I can't say yes or no on that because I was the one in front of the comment. So Mr. Ritz can. So she asked a question, can she provide comment in that? Now, my, my, my assumption is yes, of course, but I can't give that decision because I'm the one who provided that presentation.
Okay, so I mean, you handed me this, but I'm I guess Commissioner Bowman-Palat.
I think there's been some misunderstanding as far as what my intent is with all of this. And I originally had this as part of my comments, but I didn't want to cause more undue rest. I'm not against raising water rates. I understand the need for it. Absolutely. I understand that we have to be competitive with our rates. Absolutely get that too. The only thing I've been trying to look at on behalf of our residents is if we are right now putting the burden back on residents and they need to, we need to have a water rate increase. It hasn't been done for years. But what can the town do in the meantime to alleviate that water fund based on some of the things that came to light in our last session with the auditor? And I do agree, virtually every cent is used in our budget. And I think that's where the town has to do our due diligence and looking at our wants versus our needs. And how can we spend more wisely, knowing what we're up against and what we've put back on our residents? So I do think I look at this as a partnership. Absolutely, we have to raise water rates, but is there anything even the slightest bit of wiggle room that we can do to shift something that might be subjective over the other way? At no time am I intending to call anybody's integrity into question. What I'm hoping to open people's minds to is that there is, as the auditor says, a level of subjectivity. So is there something then that would make sense to show? And maybe there isn't, but I think it's worth a conversation and I think it's. that would make sense to show? And maybe there isn't, but I think it's worth a conversation. And I think it's I think we owe it to our residents to have that conversation, whether or not nothing is produced from it, fine, but having people say, nope, this is the only way is hard for me to swallow. I don't necessarily agree either with putting the water fund committee back as part of citizens advisory, because I do feel like it was up to town staff and the board. I, to put the burden on the citizens to say, keep, keep track of our water fund so we don't end up in the same position again. Maybe that's not the intent, but certainly to solicit ideas from the residents, absolutely. And it's not a, you know, town against the residents or the board against the town. It's meant to let's look at all options, put the cards on the table. Is there some wiggle room? And if there is, let's entertain it. And if there isn't, that's okay. But the fact that it seems to be shut down to even consider it is is alarming to me. Um, in light of some of the information we learned from the auditor. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bowman-Palat. At this time, I'll turn to the mayor for the mayor comments. I lost track of where we were in the agenda there. Sorry.
Okay, thank you. And that's, that's, that's always a good discussion to have up here before votes and whatever to always bring that up wiggle room, whatever you want to. National Night Out was a terrific success. It was phenomenal. I love to serve food and with the staff and what they did. You're right, those rucksacks, we, you call whatever. Were phenomenal success. Were gobbled up quickly and that will have to do that next year because they are expensive and they a good portion of our community really enjoy that for their children. Pool parties, uh, I, I wanted to go to the last one, but I was called out on a paddling medical emergency up in New York, uh, in the ten, I want thank Commissioner Amy on, and, um, had him on the farmer's market. What a terrific success that is. It's been welcoming the class of two thousand twenty-seven on Saturday was absolutely incredible and all right, the, um, and, uh, it was good to be there and talk to everybody at that time, uh, the community, um. Uh, tomorrow, um, the phase one of the mouth coming to downtown Emmitsburg, they'll take the old nursing home wing over here and it'll be, um, a formation, uh, for Mount seminarians here before they go in the seminary, uh, discern if they this is what they want to do and it'll be called the Blessed Stan Rothen Home and, uh, house, excuse me, and, uh, uh, that will be, uh, dedicated tomorrow and they will be there and that will add oh, forty students downtown and staff down here to add to commerce and, and things like that to come here. So it's it's welcome. Phase two will be next year, which puts back, that will be the graduate school for uh, physician assistants will, will take another wing at that there. Later in September, uh, the daughters will open up their museum and archives. Uh, that, that'll be another event, uh, in late September. In two thousand six, I wrote a thesis paper on black education opportunities in Northern Frederick County. There are very few. Saint Ephemia's was the only opportunity, uh, going from eighteen eighty up to nineteen forty-four. And at that time, the black students were by state law separate but equally were segregated to be in educated Saint Ephemia's, which i- is located on DePaul Street. It's not an apartment building. Uh, they were taught in the, um, a sister's, uh, home, joining that. They could not have access to water fountains or bathrooms and, uh, some stories about when I, uh, and I wrote a paper on this and one of the things I picked up at that time is that for some reason, a part of, uh, our community with, uh, the black community on West Lincoln, a wonderful history of, uh, what they're, they're being here and, and working and, and, uh, being friends to all of this. And, uh, it was left out of the national, uh, registry, uh, when it was formed and back in, I think, the early nineties. And I, I wrote about that in my paper and, uh, I'm, I'll bring this to a head. It, it is that, uh, one, one of the things with Joey Schaefer from the, uh, county executions officer was last month. I said, there are two things I'd like to see really happen before I get out of office. I like to see this Catholic high school get an opportunity to get started here and pinballing all around there. Finally, if they're going to be here and they'll have twenty students, so start out at Saint Anthony's. Then they will come downtown. They have a space lined up for them downtown probably in the first month, so first of, uh, next year. The, the other was, uh, can you help me with getting this area of, of the community annexed into, um, I don't know how to do it and I, I, and I've worked on it for fifteen years to trying to get it done and, and at the, and she said, yes, we, we would work on it. And also a wonderful lady, Elizabeth Comer from the Cattockman Historic Society, excuse me, uh, little summer, and I don't think I'm communicable, but I can't tell that to my nose. Uh, the, uh, uh, she's worked, she's working on a lot of, uh, of, of black community development here and it went through the Frederick County Reservation Commission, uh, in August. And, um, I didn't want you all to be blindsided. It's just, it's been a a sixteen, seventeen-year overnight success for me and it, it, I guess it'll come back to you all that you can say yea or nay, but they, they did survey all, all the neighbors in, in that part of, uh, to add it to uh, the town and, and they were in favor of it and uh, I don't know the next step, but it, it's gone through there and it can be annexed finally and be recognized as part of our historic tradition here in, in Emmitsburg and amen. That's, that's all I tell you. The, the wheels really started to come under quick, but I didn't want you to be blindsided and find, think that something was going on behind your back. But it was really developed here. And if you have any questions on it, uh, Elizabeth Comer can really work on that with you and, and, uh, Joey Schaefer, she's retiring and, uh, they spot, but, um, I think it's online with the Cattockton, um, historic, um, what's it called? Cattock-Fortis Historic Society. They, all that's been followed, but it's just been ginning up and Jenny up that. And I, I hope you'll welcome it to, to our, our history as, as I do. And that, I think that's all I got. But if you have any questions, I don't, I don't much. I know, I'd give you the history on it, but I, I give you history, but I can't give you uh, I did not go to the historic, uh, meeting. Uh, go ahead. Thank you.
My question has less to do with history. I'm just curiosity. What area are we talking about in? West Lincoln, so adjacent to
I think it's coming down from Meredith's home, including that and coming down probably to, um, I can't think of that road right there. Is that Patterson? Jameis?
So, yeah, it's like past the school. I know that this
That's where they
Past the pool. I know that school is back in that area.
I think it's up from a pool there and, and
Like behind where, uh, Dr. Meredith lives.
Uh, it's, it's coming down that way.
Yes.
Okay.
But like behind that, is that what you're talking about? Adjacent to the, um,
No, it's the houses that start. What is its name of the street? I'm sorry. It's a Patterson's. I, I can't, but anyway, uh, from wherever Price Community Church is, our three oh three West Lincoln up, up through, um, uh, the Meredith thing. Patterson Street, okay. And, uh, I'm sorry, I just had, uh, that's what happens when you get older. It's, it's pretty much just right up and, uh, I think it's here. Uh, one pen that doesn't work. Okay, there we go. And, uh, it's, it's pretty much right up there and it's, uh, traditional. There's still some families of, with long histories going back there and that's where the, uh, bracket, uh, the American, um, Jimmy, the black preschool was in nineteen, uh, eighteen seventy, uh, was there at one time too, so.
So it looks to be like what used to be what we talked about before, uh, potentially the Fraley Farm location.
No, it's not the Fraley Farm. It's the street. It's a lot of house along the street. They're improved houses.
Oh, you're saying, you're saying annexation. I'm thinking outside of town limits. Okay, okay, that's
This is going into historic district.
Okay. I heard the word annexation and, and it's what confused me. Okay.
No.
Now I understand. Thank you. Okay. Thank you.
Like it, thank you.
Sorry for dragging that out. I just
So, Mr. Mayor, the question that the, the proposal relates to adding to Emmitsburg's historical district, adding what had been historically an African-American neighborhood or a set of homes.
Right.
Is, and those homes would now, if, if we can get this done sooner rather than later, they will be part of the historic district.
Right. I, I would like to get the next administrations in moving that along, but I, it's, it's come, it's come along so fast since Joey Schaefer was here and Elizabeth Comer has been working with. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, sir. At this time, we now turn to public comment. Um, Mr. Kurt Costco. Do you introduce yourself and just, uh, identify whether you're, you're a resident of town or not? And then the floor is yours. You have, uh, the traffic light here is our guide.
No, actually, do you have two people signed up for public comment?
Three.
Three. Okay, he's going to go last because his presentation's a little bit longer.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We were unable to get him on the agenda for September or for August, so we invited him to come and give his presentation during public comment.
Terrific. Okay, thank you. Thank you for being flexible. Mr. Glenn Blanchard. Uh, Mr. Blanchard, so to say, you know, procedurally, it's been modified. Just identify if you're a resident of town or not, and then the floor is yours. Have to identify yourself.
Uh, good evening. My name is Glenn Blanchard and I'm a resident of two forty-three DePaul Street. Uh, I would like to speak tonight about town sport for the recreational areas of Emmitsburg. Uh, for full disclosure, my daughter Grace Blanchard, uh, works as a lifeguard at the pool. It's like our fifth season, I think, at this point. Uh, every year I get a family membership at the, for the pool and enjoy it thoroughly. The pool's a great resource. I appreciate the town support for this item. It's a great resource for people on a hot day. We got spared some of the heat that the Southwest got this summer, but it was still pretty warm in July, so definitely appreciated it. I also appreciate the town's new addition of the storyboard trail that you guys were already talking about and the, uh, county park. I think this is a really neat way, uh, to support literacy and exercise at the same time. So I'm hoping FCPL will put additional books, I guess, on a record basis to do that, but it's kind of a cool idea. I want to throw it my, my daughter the day and they're like, oh, that's kind of neat. So, um, the parks themselves are very clean, very well attended to. I appreciate that, that you have town staff to go through and pick up any trash and just kind of keep them very well attended. Um, I appreciate the continuous support of the community garden as well as a individual who has two plots this summer. My tomatoes are coming in, so, uh, appreciate that and the mulching that usually goes through with it. Um, all, I think eight plots for both this year. So there are obviously a lot of people actually appreciating the fact that they can sort of rent a piece of land and, and garden and get tomatoes, et cetera. Uh, so that's pretty cool, I think. Appreciate the, um, just the overall efforts of keeping the community park and the town parks going. Our parks are a real resource and asset to humanity that I think basically is, is a big selling point to our community. They can be able to move to Emmitsburg when you realize that you have access to the pool and the access to the trails and access to the, uh, equipment, et cetera. I think it's just a amazing resource to kind of keep funded. I would like to thank Commissioner O'Donnell for his efforts in developing hiking trails and mountain biking trails on the mountain. I think it's something that can really bring visitors to Emmitsburg. I also like to, uh, compliment Commissioner Davis and his efforts for keeping baseball in Emmitsburg. I know you spent a ton of time and hours getting the teams here and keeping it going and everything else. And during some time I look across fields and there's always someone playing, keeping it going. So I know you put a ton of time and effort into that. I've lived in Emmitsburg for thirty-two years and still feel that the town is a, a great place to live and raise children. Um, thank you for your time tonight and keep up the good work. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Mr. Sloan.
Live in town. What is the process or not process, but the USA Main Street project? Cause I've heard different things about it. And I know in, in the old days you had storefronts and people lived above it and that really doesn't exist functionally anymore. So I'm just trying to find out what this project is.
Sure. So the Maryland Main Streets program, is that?
The one that the city's dealing with now.
Okay.
I know they had a meeting about it.
So, if we're talking about the Maryland, the, the Main Street Maryland program, um, it's a program that is, uh, set up by the state. Some resources are provided by the state. Some are provided by businesses and some are provided by the town. Um, Tonty Town has this program and Thurmond has this program as our, as our nearest neighbors with this, uh, program. Basically, it is a, an, an office, like you actually have a staffer or more than one staffer who are involved in the promotion of the town for creating events for executing the events. So for example, if you had a five K run, they would see to it that it's advertised, it's very visible and businesses attend. They also take care of decoration of the main street. Uh, they also do a lot of economic promotion. So it's a means by which businesses, business owners can network with one another. Um, and it, it hopefully is one of those sort of rising tide lifts all boats type of things. So that's sort of a thumbnail sketch. Now, I can certainly give you a lot more, or one of us could certainly give you more detail if that was of interest to you. Um, and I know that they have a, a a stack of literature describing their different programs. But one of the things that's remember is it's a partnership between, uh, businesses and institutions. Um, and hopefully the university where we to do it, the town and the community. Uh, so, and, and it's a tourism program that would give us a lot of, that potentially would give us a lot of visibility and bring a lot of visits. And, you know, the ideal is one thing is where a person comes and, comes and stays and it puts beds and heads. You know, you put the folks who want to stay in town and spend money in town and enjoy what we offer culturally.
And so we need a bed setup for the injured that come out of ski liberty. That's it. Have a room, rent some traction. He laughs. Ride an ambulance that deals with ski liberty for a while.
Thank you, sir. Okay, um, we now again turn to Mr. Kurt Costco. Here we go. Sure, sure.
So, uh, good evening to the, uh, town of Emmitsburg officials and, and, and residents. Um, I think you have a handout that we provided. It's about seven slides. I'm going to go through this relatively quickly. If you have any questions, please, please stop me and ask. Uh, I also love some business cards with Sabrina. So if there's questions that come up from anyone afterward, please see, either give me a call or, or email me. So that would be great. So my name's Kirk Costco. I, uh, represent Chantel Communications. Uh, I'm not a resident of the community. So I live in Pennsylvania. Uh, it's a beautiful community. I don't know that I've been through here before, but it's very nice. So I'm here to, tonight to talk about Chantel Glow Fiber. That's our product name. And we build fiber to the home networks, uh, mostly in small to mid-sized, uh, communities. And so we're very interested in talking with the community tonight about possibly coming in and offering our services here. We, um, we're not looking for funding. I mean, that's one of the questions that usually comes up right away that we can squash that one rather quickly as we're not looking for any funding. We're completely funded. And we build advanced networks. So we're located in Harrisonburg, Virginia. We started out as Shannon Doherty Telephone about a hundred and twenty years ago. So we're not a new startup company. We've been around a long time. And we've been expanding. So currently the fiber to the home product we have, uh, we're passing about a hundred and eighty-two thousand homes right now with it and growing every day. So there's a map we provided with our fiber network. Uh, we've got about nine thousand miles of fiber and that goes up every day. Um, we've worked in, doing a lot of work in southeastern Pennsylvania right now, York Lancaster Counties as well as, um, Shippensburg, Green Castle, Waynesburg. We are, we currently offer the globe products in Carlisle and Hanover and in the city of Frederick. So we're doing a lot of work in, in Maryland right now. Um, so we have a cable franchise agreement in the city of Maryland. And we're talking with some other communities in the area as well. So really what we're interested in is the cable franchise, which there's a currently, your current provider has a cable franchise with the city. It's a non-exclusive. They're not looking to come in and replace your current provider. We would be looking to come in and compete against your current provider. So competition is very good for the residents. Um, there's a lot of advantages to it. Um, from pricing, customer service, um, product offering, a number of things. So our network is one hundred percent fiber, um, all the way into the home. We offer video, phone and internet. Uh, our internet product, uh, all of our speeds are symmetrical. So the advantage you have of a fiber to the home network is that if you're down, if you're paying for a down speed of six hundred megahertz, uh, most traditional cable systems don't most traditional cable systems don't offer that on the upload speed. It's only the download speed. So when you talk about symmetrical speeds that we offer, everything is equal. So if you purchase a six hundred meg download, you're going to six hundred meg upload from us. Why is that important in today's world? Well, we really discovered it through COVID when we had a lot of people working from home, people studying from home, students, telemedicine. There's a lot of advantages to having those kind of speeds in both directions. So it really is an advanced network that would be looking to bring to the community. Any questions on that? Keep going. Keep going. So the benefit is this will be a new network. We'll be coming in and making a significant capital investment. There's a lot of advantages to it. We have residential as well as business products. So there's a lot of advantages to both to both business and residence. We do a lot of commercial work, point to point fiber connections with banks, hospitals, medical facilities. A lot of those things as well as small business. It's a big advantage for small businesses as well. So timeline, I'm moving ahead here quickly. I want to make sure we have time for some questions. So timeline, we look, we start with the municipal engagement, which is really why I'm here this evening to just gauge the interest of the community. Then we we would generally what we do is we would then work with the the town manager and generally the town attorney, whatever attorney represents the town. If you would decide to move forward with a cable franchise negotiation and then we kind of work through that process. And the construction, the reason that we're we're kind of looking to move forward as quickly as we can is that the construction now for fiber keeps getting pushed out. So right now, we're looking at about eighteen to twenty-four months. Once a cable franchise is signed to actually start the construction. There's a lot of work in the background that goes on with design, working with utilities to get poll attachment agreements. We would be working. We have a kickoff meeting generally with the town or a community that we're talking about within a month or two afterward, just to introduce ourselves. But there's a lot of work that goes on in the background. So that eighteen to twenty-four months is to just get started on the actual construction. Brings in local jobs, a lot of activity. It's very good for the talked about competition, which is very key. So generally, I've been a business a long, long time and talked to many, many customers. And one of the things they usually tell me is that I wish I had a choice. You know, I wish I could, you know, choose what my provider is. So one of the things that we do is we commit and offer an additional choice to your current provider. And then the last page just talks about some pricing. This is current pricing. So we have four levels of TV services. And then we have, these are some internet speeds that we currently offer. And then we also have a phone service for twenty dollars a month. So I know that was quick, but I wanted to make sure we were able to answer any questions.
Any board members with questions right now?
No, I don't have any questions at this time. Just thank you for the for speaking to us. You know, on on the surface, I think it's it's a great idea. I like competition when it comes to that market. We only really have one choice. So that's all I'll say now, but I'd be interested to see this okay, pursued in the future. I won't have a say in that matter. I'll be done here, but putting it on record. Thank you.
Yes. Yes.
Sure, absolutely.
Just a quick question. Um, maybe this is not a quick question, and if so, I apologize.
That's okay. We have time.
What feasibly? How much disruption would there be to the town or community for the actual lane of the fiber and getting everything in place?
Good question. So generally, what we do is where there were the utilities are aerial. So if your phone and power aerial, we would go aerial as well. So we would apply for the poll permits. We would once those approved where we could attach to the polls. And then generally, we you'd see utility trucks now probably working where they would maybe block off a lane or they have flagmen depending on some of the secondary streets. Sometimes they don't even do that. The underground is a bit more involved because we we generally bore everything. So we don't trench up people's yards. However, we do bore and we bore test pit holes through. We follow this, the the state and federal laws and the local laws very closely. So we would everything would be permitted though. So the town would know exactly where we're working. They would approve it. But the underground is more disruptive without a doubt. So I've looked at some recently, though, and and one of the things that we work on is making sure that residents know we're coming. So we do a thirty, a sixty day mailer. And then we tag the doors and neighborhoods before we start construction. And that helps to basically let everyone know what we're doing, cuts down on the calls coming into the community, which is important. And we work very closely with the committee on permitting so that we're not overextending any of the the services the the community is providing.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for coming. It's appreciated you're coming here. The scale is very interesting in that you are the first to say your foot's in the door in that respect. Well done. From my understanding, there's to be a tidal wave of federal support and funding for fiber optic to rural communities. Do you tap into that? Are you trying to proceed that? Or are you aligned with that? How does that figure into your business model?
Another good question. So a lot of that, the the current funding is the bead funding, and that's for underserved or unserved areas. So that's really what that money is for. And that would be if you have twenty-five over three, that's what they would consider to be underserved. If you have no internet services unserved, so a lot of that money is designated for that. The state of Maryland also had grant money. So we've we we've we've been awarded three or four grants in in Frederick County to extend services to those unserved or underserved already at about forty-five hundred homes. So we're doing, we are doing some of that work as well. I don't think the I don't know what the speeds that are offered here, but I doubt any of that funding would apply here because it's really not considered underserved or unserved in the community.
So sort of a follow up, we have a federal installation adjacent to town. We have federal installations near town. How does how does a company like yours tap into fiber optic to provide fiber optic speeds without what appears to be fiber optic channels available at the private level? So I know there's federal, but I don't know that there's private.
Well, there's a lot of private fiber optic networks.
Okay.
And that's what we are building through Frederick County right now. We have currently have it under construction already. So this would be a private network.
Sure. No, no, I understand that. But I guess what I'm trying to say is how do we link to the next person on the chain? This is something that you would have to create a link, like a physical linkage linkage of a fiber optic line from, say, Emmitsburg to Thurmont and from Thurmont down to Walkersville to Frederick City.
Exactly.
Your intent?
Yes.
Or, okay.
Yes.
Is any of this contingent upon any of these other communities joining that chain?
Yes and no. So we we also can utilize the state roads or state right of ways.
Okay.
But we are in we are in discussions with Thurmont. If you'd like to contact Jim Thurmont, he can tell you where we've had many, many discussions with Thurmont. We're we're much further along. I don't want to say anything more than that at this point, but but Jim could probably tell you more about that. But yeah, we started in the city of Frederick, which we've already built a network there. We actually have fiber coming through the Frederick County to serve other areas.
Okay.
So and we also are doing work on the eastern shore with the city of Salisbury and Wycomico County. So do a lot of expansion work in Maryland.
That's great. Okay, thank you. I didn't, you know, I think we're trying to get a overview and you're definitely doing a nice job of providing that. And I think you will find there's there's interest in the community in residential and with commercial. So I'm sure you'll hear more people investigating.
And we're very interested in in coming into the community. So that's why I'm here this. So thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming. Okay, so that concludes our public comment. So at this time, we turn, well, we we still do not have administrative business, correct? None tonight. Very good. So we turn to consent agenda. First item is the reappointment of Mr. Wayne Slaughter to the Citizens Advisory Committee with the term of September eighth, twenty twenty-three to September eighth, twenty twenty-five for consideration. So with that in mind, is there a motion to accept Mr. Slaughter to the Citizens Advisory Committee for this term?
So move.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Bowman-Palat, it's been seconded by Commissioner Davis. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody against? Motion carries five to zero. We now turn to the reappointment of Sandy Slaughter to the Citizens Advisory Committee with the term of September seventh, twenty twenty-three to September seventh, twenty twenty-five. Is there a motion to accept the reappointment of Ms. Slaughter with these terms?
So move.
Thank you. Is there a second for Commissioners? We need his motion.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Motion's been made by Commissioner Sweeney, seconded by Commissioner Ritz. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody against? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Okay. We now turn to the treasurer's report.
We had a beginning balance of eight million, five hundred seventy-five thousand, five hundred twenty-six dollars as of July first. Total deposits were four hundred sixty-five thousand, eight hundred thirty-nine dollars. Total withdrawals was two hundred sixty-three thousand, twenty dollars, which left us with the operating balance forward to August of eight million, seven hundred seventy-eight thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars. And the top ten text are at the bottom of page. If anybody has any questions.
Thank you, sir. We turn to the planning commission report.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mrs. Son already pretty much covered everything that we we covered at our last meeting. I guess I just have one question for you to throw it out there now is that I know we're in the process of beginning the comprehensive plan, and I know that there'll be community involvement and there are plans under work. So if anyone has any questions in the meantime, should they reach out to you?
Yes.
Perfect. Okay, thanks. I'm just there. It's on record and I'll direct them your way to if they have any questions. But I do know we're going to have some things to get more community involvement, which I think is great. So thanks.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions related to the planning commission report? Hearing none, we now move on to our first agenda item, number one. Approval of the twenty twenty-three election judges for consideration. Staff, do we want to turn to you or?
Um, you can. So as as required in the code, you're required to have election judges for the upcoming election. We reached out to the previous election judges who all graciously agreed to do it again. And so this is basically in order of filing. You have Tammy May, Sharon Hane, Lynn Ordorf and Charlotte Mazaleski. All of them have prior town and county elections. They're very familiar with our system. They're very familiar of the requirements of our code. The mayor's twenty twenty-three recommendation would be for the chief judge of Sharon Hane, Judge Tammy May, Judge Lynn Orendorf, Orndorf, and the greeter alternate judge, Charlotte Mazaleski. And we are just asking for approval of those election judges.
Okay, I'll turn to the board with a simple question. Would everybody be comfortable taking this as a collective or would anyone want to do it individually? Do it by individual?
Collective.
Collective. We're good. Okay, all right. All right. So therefore, moving forward, is there a motion to accept the election judges as described? Chief Judge Sharon Hane, Judge Tammy May, Judge Lynn Orndorf, greeter, alternate judge, Charlotte Mazaleski.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second for Commissioner Ritz's motion?
Second.
Thank you. Motion's been made by Commissioner Ritz, seconded by Commissioner Bowman-Palat. Is there any further discussion? Let's say, thank them all. Thank you very much. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody against? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Sure. Turn to agenda item number two. Approval of rules and procedures for community legacy grant program for the sustainable communities work group for consideration. These rules of procedure are adopted as are adopted as a guide to assist the Sustainable Communities Work Group and staff to efficiently and orderly administer the Community Legacy Grant Program. Okay, staff, we turn to you.
Yes, so I'm going to turn this over to Julia. This was a collective effort between her and Ms. Shaw, who managed the community legacy grant in the previous town planner's departure. Now Julia will be taking over the program this year. So this is a collective of effort.
Yeah. So this SOP is divided into multiple sections. I can just briefly go through each section. The first one outlines the application requirements and instructions for outreach to potential applicants. When we were reviewing this this afternoon, I did notice that we're missing a single bullet and it should say something on the lines of once the Sustainable Community work group makes their recommendation for final location, the grant manager should submit these to the Maryland Historical Trust and funding will not be granted until the HCD approves. And more importantly, the role of the SCWG is to solely provide recommendations and final approval rests with the HCD. The second section talks about goes more into the role of SCWG and the requirements for a member to be eligible and for the group group and how meetings should be conducted. And also outlines the points to consider when making recommendations to allocate funds. The second or the third section talks about how the funds are limited and how they're distributed fifty percent match for exterior improvements capped at twelve thousand, five hundred and just to provide transparency regarding financial assistance applicants can expect from the program. The grant agreement section outlines the terms of receiving funds and instructions for communication with applicants. And the property owner reimbursement section talks about the steps for reimbursement, which involves getting funds from the HCD and issuing checks to applicants. The last section is about how a property owner must receive approval from the town to make any alterations and any operations made within the first year would require the property in order to reimburse the town the amount that was granted.
I just would say a few things that we made sure to include in there. Um, that all properties have to reside. It's on the website and on all the applications. Your property falls within the sustainable community framework. Again, the sustainable work group only makes recommendations, final approval rests with the state. The application is considered approved until letters awarded by the state. This community workers consists of five members and they shall all be appointed by the mayor and be approved by the board commissioners. At this point, I whether or not the board wants to approve the current three members. Right, straight at the current task. So we stick in two more members or if they want to approve this, the remaining. For stop now. A no term limit. They must reside in town. All meetings are public. Minutes are kept. Judges are posted. Companies of the application should not be made available publicly. Personal information provided in the application that was concerned. Last, they're out. Signed in sheets. We went over some of the things they should look as a guideline for allocating funds.
Are there any questions or comments or modifications? Staff would like to, sorry, the board would like to see for staff.
I I have. I'm sorry. No, did you? I didn't realize. Okay, um, I guess just one. I know historically, this program has focused on exterior facades, which I know is part of the part of the program. There are other items that do fall under this that we don't focus on currently, like streetscapes and things. I forget all of them. I just remember that one on top of my head. It's on our website, too, because it actually highlights those. So I guess, do we really want to limit the what we what we do with the money that's received from the state that we're only focusing on exterior facades when it could technically, those funds could technically be used for other items.
Other items such as?
It's on our website. It was at one point. I don't, I did not check today, but I know streetscapes was one. It's taken directly from the the Maryland website regarding the communities, community legacy grants.
I mean, the board can conclude whatever they want in in the the requirements or the review. I know that we've always just focused on facades.
True.
And we always get enough applications to cover the money just on facades, but if the board wants to open it up to something else that we don't.
So yes.
Could prioritize facade over, I guess, streetscape landscaping.
I think.
I think the problem with landscaping is it doesn't have a life expectancy of more than five years. I don't know.
What's a streetscaping? So I don't know exactly what that defines, but like I said, it was, I think, are you looking up the on the website right now?
So the Community Legacy Program, um, it says exterior facade and other improvements.
Are you on their website or?
Oh, sorry. Yeah. On the on the state or on the on their website, it says project activities typically include but are not limited to mixed-use development consisting of residential, commercial, and open space, business retention, expansion, and attraction initiatives, street gate scape improvements, increasing homeownership, and home rehabilitation among residents, residential and commercial facade improvement programs, real estate acquisition, and this one surprises me, including land banking and strategic demolition.
Yeah, that's what I mean. I think they all fit in there. It's it's just what the board and the mayor want to set as their goal for this grant. And if their goal is facade or if it's streetscape, the board just needs to to determine that.
Sure, Mr. Mayor.
Just the history of this, back when I was elected in 2011, we all wanted part of we're going in with was let's get in Main Street. But we found out that we weren't, we're too young to get in Main Street. And not established enough and have to gear up for that. So we went into a sustainable community program, which we have citation out in the lobby there of being coming into that and and the main thing is we're trying to do what Main Street would give us and all the properties that suffer all the traffic and everything, the big trucks rolling through, help them out with their facades. And everything it goes through here, if I understand, it has to go be approved by the Maryland Historic Society. And so you have that there, too. But, you know, we've already, I think it's produced about five hundred thousand dollars worth of funds and with springboards into equal funds from the property owners of up to a million dollars. And that's been done downtown. And and that's what maybe one reason where with the sidewalks and the square and everything else that happened down there, that it's an award-winning town, the top ten most beautiful little towns in Maryland. And you just want to really use that. And and we'd only get about fifty thousand every year. We always go for seventy-five, and I think one year we didn't get any. And I don't know what happened during COVID or whatever, but that was it. It was our, it was our finger in the dike with we couldn't have Main Street. And now we're a Main Street affiliate, but I'd still like to help these houses that labor under the traffic and help them out and make the town shine. And then there are there are other people that need money, too. So it'll be up to the board and the mayors to come to make those decisions. And but that that's the history on it. And two, two of the members here along this will probably maybe remember that. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
So what, Commissioner, what I would add is when we did the grant application, we were specific about facade. So maybe for this year, we continue with it being facade and maybe looking at it expanding it next year when we apply for the grant, because I don't know if we change what we allow in our applications, if the state would approve it. I just looked up streetscape, and it's increased street lighting, enhanced street landscaping and street furniture, increased sidewalk coverage, connectivity of pedestrian walkways, bicycling infrastructure, street crossings, safety features, and traffic calming measures. To me, that's more geared to like municipalities or organizations.
Okay. I mean, I know it's a competitive market, like you say, but then one of the other bullet items, I believe, was home restoration.
Yeah.
I think we need to focus on that because we're looking at the word exterior facade, and if we're using facade as the front of a building and making downtown more beautiful, and, you know, we got this traffic coming through and trucks. A lot of the applications for these deal with individuals roofs, I wouldn't consider that a facade. I consider that a home improvement.
I just don't want to see his point back ourselves into a corner where
Which is fine.
Could, no, no, could be a time that a business wants to put a park bench out front, or the ice cream shop wants to put a bike rack. Right. You know, something that would apply for that. So I agree with what staff has done, but if it can go a little bit wider, let's, you know, and then you prioritize your applications.
Yeah, and I think that would be on the on the committee, then the group that would now be five members that, I mean, that's that's on them then to to review those applications. And I do realize it can, it is very competitive, and probably that's what the majority of them would be used for. You know, fixing up fixing up a house, whether it's, you know, the front, the way it looks at the front, you know, put new siding on it, a new roof, and roofs go bad. I get that. So I don't know how to word it. That's my, that's my thing. I'm having a hanging up. I'm hung up on the wording right now.
Can we come back to you?
Sure.
That's all right.
Yes.
Commissioner Bowman-Palat.
Thanks. Um, so the applicant, it has, it's a yearly application, correct, that's submitted? Has it already been submitted for this coming year?
Yeah, that was based off the resolution you guys approved.
Right.
Just a month or two ago.
Yeah, I think it was last.
Yeah.
So I don't think we can change it if we if we sent it off already. I think we're probably locked into it, but it's certainly something to consider for the following year, maybe, because I think you're right, Ms. Willetts. I don't think they let you go back based on what you've already submitted.
Right. Excuse me. And that would give us a chance or give Julia a chance to confirm with DC.
DCD?
Yeah, DCHD. Always get them backwards, to see exactly what qualifies under those guidelines, because they're a little little vague, and that way we can either revisit the study and their operating procedure and just add that in there going forward.
Just to confirm, and I think I know the answer, anyone in that sustainable, any property in that sustainable district could apply for the facade improvement grant, right? And I think we had some businesses in the past who were awarded, correct?
Yes, we have had some businesses.
Um. Is there? Has it always been for exterior in the sense like, what if a business wanted to renovate inside, put down new flooring or whatever it may be?
We've always done in the history of the town, our our has always been the front. Because the way that we looked at it, the facade is basically the face of the building. It's what's facing Main Street or the area. That's what everybody sees when they drive by, and the goal of it was to improve the appearance of of the area, bring up everybody's home values. Certainly, if the DCHD says we can expand it to interior or expand it to park benches or bike racks or outdoor cafes, certainly, you know, that's great.
Just, I wanted to throw in something.
Oh, sorry. Yes.
I skipped a line. It says right now, it does say the cost of exterior facade and other improvements. So I like, I skipped a line there.
So that's page thirty-nine of sixty-one.
Yes.
Slash three to four.
It's number bullet, item number two, under availability of funds.
So we do have one.
Do that covers part of that list, and that you said that in the future, potentially, we could expand upon.
Okay.
And we
Um.
We we get, we apply every six months, correct? Because it was a once a year, I thought was twice a year. Every six months?
Once a year.
Once a year.
Yeah. Um. Was was this an existing document or was it recently, was just an update to an existing document or is this brand new?
This is, sorry, Julia, brand new, based off of previous meetings with the board. We felt it was best to come up with a standing and operating procedure going forward. It'd be easier for everybody know what's expected, what what the board's looking for, what the work group's looking for, what staff's responsibility is. So this is brand new. Now Julia and Matty came up with it.
Okay.
Based off their experiences and conversations with DHCD.
Okay, thank you. And, um. Yeah. So there there are some. So with a SOP that can be changed at any time, that's, it doesn't, how does that work? It could, anytime it can be updated or?
Yeah, the board can update at any time. It can be brought back with the changes or requests as long as it's advertised for a meeting.
Sure. Okay. And I I know that there was a lot of questions about it earlier in the year, so I do appreciate the amount of effort that this went into. A few things that I would like to consider. I would love to spend a little bit more time looking at this before we make a decision. I do have some suggestions, but for consideration, and I don't know if it's necessarily worth the time right now or?
So so now Julia and I had this conversation earlier today. This can be tabled. The, we start accepting applications.
They're due by December thirty-first.
So, yeah, we start accepting applications as soon as we get the approval letter, which we have not gotten yet. And then the Sustainable Work Group typically meets in January or February.
Okay.
So there is time if I'd say it probably should be approved by in September, no later than.
Okay, so rather than try to hammer out a final copy tonight, because we do have a big agenda, would it be permissible for me to put something?
Let me ask staff a question regarding the September agenda. I don't, I'm not aware of any massive agenda items. Would we have time for almost workshopping this, like spending time to take the modifications, or is this something that we would want to do out of a meeting? I don't know which is the better format for staff and for transparency.
I don't know that you need a workshop. I don't know. I don't know what the, I don't know what the board intentions are. So you may have the floating zone coming back in September if it's not approved at this meeting. And then I do have four agenda items for September.
Okay.
Are they big ones?
Yeah.
You know.
Do you feel?
Don't put me on the spot. Probably one or two.
Okay, she did pause there.
Yes, there was a hesitation. That's exactly right. What are your?
I think if the board would send us what your questions are, what your concerns are, what you want us to look into, then certainly we can fashion it into this document. This was our first stab at it. Fashion it in the document and bring it back in September.
And our goal, I want to hopefully put it out there for as a thought for the board. Our goal is to get a working document that would put guidelines and restrictions on how it can be used in a transparent manner. So I think we're satisfying that.
Right.
It was satisfying both of those. I think there's a time issue regarding the September twenty-ninth deadline or September deadline. So
What's the deadline?
For getting the document completed, is that correct? Right? Because it needs to be applied to those who might win or those who might be applying for the money that is potentially granted.
Oh, okay. So that's not, that window's not open yet?
No, well, timeline is, we're working on this document. We've applied for grant money in general terms as a town on the twenty-ninth, though we'll know by the twenty-ninth if those funds have become available to us from the grant. And then at that time, we would make an announcement to the community and say, hey, if you're in the historic district, this is a grant that you might be interested in, and they would apply from that point moving forward.
I see.
So if we were to take this as a working document, in in the short term, we could consider accepting it, like in the September meeting with with some, you know, modifications. But then we can certainly come back to it, like for twenty twenty-five.
Sure. Sure. And I mean, I, yeah, like Ms. Willett said, you can update it anytime. I have like ten different suggestions. I didn't want to. I mean, I I can, but if.
I would just, I would recommend and just let's let's table it till September. I think you'll have plenty of time in September. Just know this round, it can only be the facade, because that's all we put in our grant application. That's what you put in your resolution. It can only be the facade, but we can certainly look at those other things when we apply next year and incorporate it into this next time.
Facade and home improvements.
Well, it says and other improvements. So we need to clarify what that says, what that means.
I think that's a catch-all subjective term there. So I mean, in a way, that might, that might be beneficial, that it's not as.
Considering from the attorney shaking the head, no, I think it's a specific language item.
Yeah, and ultimately, it's going to fall on the
Forgot she was here.
We might say, yeah, go for it. And the state's come back and say, no, it doesn't meet the guidelines. So I think we need to do our due diligence and ask them what they mean by other improvements.
Okay, and that's three weeks from tonight. The September meeting, is that enough time? So you would need something, I know Commissioner Bowman-Palat has some some items. If anyone else wanted to throw something out there, when would you like that by?
Sooner than later. By the end of this week.
Did you catch that?
By the end of the week.
No, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, the mayor was.
Staff is asking if your suggestion.
Need to use that.
That's going to be your suggestions to be submitted before the end of
By Friday.
That's fine. Yes.
And can they be shared with all of us? Can you put them together?
Yeah, we can.
As long as we don't comment on them.
Yeah, we can share as long as you don't comment.
Right, right. And also, can we see a copy of the application?
Yeah.
Is that possible?
Yeah, we'll send it. We can send a blanket application out. The application came from, is that from DHCD?
Yeah.
Yeah, because I think if I was looking right, you know, we require now three bids, but the application from the state doesn't require those three bids. So we're kind of making this thing more complicated than it needs to be. I just want to make it an easy process. Yeah, we had a lot of people last time, couldn't get three bids. So I didn't, things haven't gotten any better. So, so thanks.
Okay, so is there a motion to table this until the September, sorry, Monday, September eleventh meeting? Thank you. Is there a second for Commissioner Sweeney's motion to table this for the September eleventh, twenty twenty-three town meeting?
I'll second that. Thank you.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Sweeney, seconded by Commissioner Ritz. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody against? Motion carries five to zero. Okay, so we will come back to it in our next meeting. We, as well as we'll need to remember to add that to the agenda. Thank you. Okay, we turn now to agenda number three, approval of bid for downtown streetlight purchase for consideration. For this, we turn to staff.
I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Shaw. This is just the the town submitted several grants for the replacement of the streetlights downtown. I'll let Michelle speak to all the bids and the bidding process. She did do a PowerPoint. As part of this, staff does have a recommendation. However, we would like the board's input on our recommendation, the mayor's recommendation, or if you completely want to go with a different recommendation. I think the PowerPoint will be very helpful.
Thank you. So this is agenda item three for the approval of the downtown streetlight purchase bid, which was advertised by the town on June fifteenth with a due date of July twenty-first, and the bids were opened by Ms. Willetts, myself, Mr. Click, and Mr. Thistle on August third. The project or the proposed project
Um, the project or the proposed project would replace 103 total streetlights on Main Street and South Eden Avenue in the town. 97 lights are located on Main Street, East and West, and six lights are located on South Eden Avenue. The existing old Boston style streetlights are from circa 1980 and have chipping paint, rusting bases and bolts, and have been a safety hazard. In addition, the town has received numerous complaints over the years about the light pollution emitted from the lights that glare up into residential windows as the lights are not cut off luminaires and are non-dimitable, which means 25% of the lamp women output radiates over an 80 degree angle into nearby windows. The existing 40 plus year old lights also have fogging globes around the, um, bulb due to age. Please note this bid is for the purchase only, not for the installation of the lights. Once a light is chosen, um, by the board, town staff plans to advertise another bid for the installation of the lights, and, um, we anticipate bringing this to the board, um, in October. Um, so the bid was advertised and all the required methods per town code. And for funding, we have multiple grants. We had to kind of piecemeal this project because of the amount. Um, so we have a MEA, street lighting and outdoor lighting efficiency grant for 27,500, two USDA grants, one for 75,000 and one for 50,000. We have a DHCD operating assistance grant for 10,000. And then, um, we also have a business district safety grant, um, which is currently pending. This was leftover money from the streetlight or the speed trailers. And so they said we can only use this money for lighting. And, um, so our pen, that's pending approval from the state. And then the town has a required match per the USDA and MEA of a little over 71,000. My total, total cost of 257,876. Um. Let's see. So, well, my side has that on it. So I'll just go ahead. We had nine total bids received, which are listed in the agenda packet on page 43. The bids are listed in alphabetical order. After extensive review by town staff, we recommend four finalists, which are Catoctin Lighting, Daybreak, LED LLC, Rexel USA and Shepherd Electric Supply. And the remainder of this presentation is a comparison of these four bids. The interesting thing to note about this bid is we did not specifically say, um, you have to, even though our current streetlights are HADCO brand, um, we didn't say they had to be HADCO. We said we prefer them. And then we kind of asked the suppliers to give us their best recommendation for a historic looking streetlight. So two of the, most of these, um, companies have the historic streetlight look, and then two of them, which was Shepherd and Rexel, um, also suggested a still historic looking light, but it's a full cutoff. So currently our lights on Main Street are semi-cut-off, meaning some of the lights, um, still up glare into the night sky, but there's also lights known as dark sky certified, meaning that none of the light is supposed to illuminate into the night sky. Um, and all is supposed to cast down at the street. Um, so we can move forward. Um, so here's a just overall comparison of those four streetlight companies. Catoctin Lighting is local, they're in Thurmont. Their bid, um, was for 266,140. And Daybreak is out of San Antonio, Texas. Um, you can see their bid amount of just over 205,000. Then Rexel is in Dallas, Texas. Option one is like I said, a very similar match to what we currently have on Main Street. And then option two, is kind of, is the dark sky certified. And I have pictures of these lights later on. And then Shepherd Electric, same thing. Um, they're on a Baltimore option. One looks like our current streetlights and option two is the dark sky certified. And, um, we, uh, we estimated a purchase price of around 227,000 for this grant and 30,000 for installation. Next slide please. So here is the Catoctin lighting bid. Um, and you can see it looks just like our current existing streetlights. Something to note with them is obviously they're a local company, but they have done street lighting. They had references for Thurmont and Brunswick, which both spoke highly of Catoctin lighting. And this light is semi-cut-off. So again, it goes up into the night sky. Um, and we're looking for the board as I go through these lights to tell us which way you would prefer us to purchase. Next please. Um, is Daybreak LED. This is the full cutoff, zero uplight. And it, um, very similar looking basis and poles. Yep. Thanks. And then here's Rexel. This is the option one that matches what we currently have on Main Street. And then their option two is called the Washington, and this is the full cutoff. Hey, sorry. And then Shepherd Electric, they have the same manufacturer, um, but they bid that they use for their bid. So that's why the Rexel and Shepherd have the same lights. It's just slightly different price, but they're using the same manufacturer. So Dorchester matches what we currently have. And the Washington, again, like Rexel is dark sky certified. Um, in case anyone forgets what our lights look like, this is what they look like. And these are some of the issues that we are having with the lights. Um, you can see they're rusting bolts and at the bottom and the chipping paint. I think there's two other sides like this. Similar, the globes are fogging. Rusting bases again, fogging globes. And then this should be the last side. This is just the location where it's going to occur. And we did reference checks on all the four finalist companies and they were all positive.
Um, Mr. Click is here. He is the one that works on the streetlights, replaces all the streetlights. So he is available for any questions regarding these four options for streetlights. Um. You guys?
So a design question, do they all have the means to illuminate the, uh, the wreaths that we have during the holiday season? Like we have some sort of outlet attachment. Do we know about that?
Outlet attachments for like our Christmas lights and stuff.
To propose?
So the, all these designs would satisfy that? Okay, great. Thank you.
Um, first of all, thank you for being here. This is great. I know you've been in Ocean City for a couple of days, so it's good to get you back here. In the past, we've heard a lot from, uh, residents complaining about two things. The street's not being bright enough, but the lights being too bright coming into the houses. Is there one of these that meet those two things that can help us? Okay. Yeah. Cause people on. Yeah. Because the people on Main Street had two concerns. One, the street's not being bright enough, but two, too much coming into their house. I don't know how you fix that, but if there's a, you know, a design that would fix that.
Yeah, we've, we've had many complaints about Main Street not being bright enough and, and being dark in, in particular areas, because there's not enough brightness there. And that's was probably one of the driving forces behind looking at this. And then obviously the age of all our streetlights. The only way to guarantee no light is to do the full cutoff. Dark sky. Yeah. The full cutoff dark sky. As you can see, those options do not match any of our streetlights. Um, if you want to go back, keep going.
No, that's okay. Well, is there something that can? In black.
And the basic idea, the basic idea, that one broadcast down, correct?
Correct.
I mean, and it's LED. I'm assuming they're all LED, but.
But it's not going to match your.
Sorry, I should have added. So for the RFP, we required that although it's poles be black, they'd be dimmable. They either be semi-cut-off or dark sky certified. They have LED bulbs in them, and they all have outlets on them too.
Oh.
So. I have some questions. I talked about dimming. I noticed some discrepancy amongst these different, um, companies with their dimming capabilities. Like Rexel and Shepherd look like they could potentially really light up everything. Uh, they go up to 130 watts. Whereas Catoctin lighting only goes to 50 and Daybreak only goes to 80. So can we? We talk about that, like, um, what we currently have, or they're not dimmable in town on, on Main Street, correct?
One in front of Dave's house, one out.
There's. But the Main Street, Main Street does not have dimmable, except for those two, like prototypes that we put out. Right.
And they're 40. Okay. And how much difference does this full cutoff versus semi-cut-off? I don't know the science behind all that. Like, you know, the night sky. My, I, the way I envision it would be if it's not being going up and it's going down the street, that would actually make things brighter.
On the street.
On the street, but you have the dimmable capabilities. If it's, guess that area is too bright.
Which ones are on, do, do we know which ones are on South? No. Mountaineers Way? Cause were those replaced in the last couple of years or so?
They're all the, go ahead, Jimmy.
Those are 40 watt.
You good? Now I have one more.
Mr. Mayor, do you have a, something you want to add?
Just a little history. The, the last time we did, we got a full grant to put the LED lights. And it was over 10 years, 11 years ago, and we got a full grant. But we just put the bulbs in and kept the old, uh, sta, what do you call it? Standard poles and, and, uh, that, that led to a lot of problems. The Goldie Ox effect, this is too bright. This was too, uh, dark and, uh, and that's the way it went. But, uh, and, uh, the reason we put LED lights in because they're, give you about a 10 year life where the old lights we had, we have three, about 330 light poles about, and, uh, we replaced the lights before that every three years. The bulbs would cost something and the labor on top, I think bulbs cost $20 a piece. Every three years. And also we, uh, the labor, uh, on that, but, um, this is good. You're going to get a, a new standard, yeah, to hold the bulb and, and, uh, you can go from, go from there. But it's, it's been a terrific program and saved us a lot of money. These LED low meaning, uh, the lights are spectacular. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Ms. Bowman-Palat, then Mr. Sweeney.
Um. When it says, for example, up there, 17 watt with 130 watt dimmer. Is it a 17 watt bulb that, how does, or is it a 130 watt bulb?
This bulb, like a dimmer. Whatever you want.
Yes.
Never like a 40 or 50.
Hmm.
Ones that's trying to fix yourself.
Hmm.
Yes. So that basically means it can go anywhere from 17 to 130.
Oh, gotcha. Okay. Um, I. Yes, it does. Right in my bedroom window. I have heard other residents say the same thing, like it, it, you know, is the light going where it needs to go? Um. What are the, is there a price difference between the types of bulbs in the dark skies versus the other ones? Or is it just the design of the, of the lamp shade?
So I think.
We'll get back to that.
I think, having seen this in MML, I'm being an amateur. So, uh, if, if you look at this, this is what the, and I'm looking, showing this here. Uh, the disc that has the LED, looks like a Lego board and it just blasts light down. So if you have essentially the ring around it, you're not going to have as much thrown sideways. So if you were to look at it on a really foggy night, and this is what they had in their demonstrations and some other little videos, was it would literally look like a pyramid of light. It would be very specific and there'd be little, very little spillage of light laterally. So it would be less likely, depending on the height of the, the post for it to go into a home, less likely, but you know, there's going to be, you know, like moves like this, it doesn't look like this.
Right.
So, um, I hope that helps. Too much information, probably.
So you should question the, why there's the price difference?
No, no, I was just wondering, cause, uh, Mr. Mayor mentioned, you know, having to factor in the cost of the bulb. So I didn't know if that was going to play a factor in any of these per se.
Yes.
If, or it's just like the design.
Yeah, your price includes everything.
Okay. All right.
This is me. Are these lights hard to get to repair if we have knocked off? I don't know how, how hard the other ones we have now, they'll get. No, um, I have another one question that does has to do with the, what would we do with the old lights? Would they take them or we keep some for repair parts?
Yeah, it depends what style you decide to go with. If it's something completely different than what we have, obviously it's not compatible. I would think. I don't know, Jimmy. Yeah.
Okay. Do you mean completely different than what's there right now or on other streets or both?
What we currently have. So what we currently have is uniform throughout the town. It's whatever she showed up there. Yeah. Yeah, that's exactly what we have now. Right.
Can we ask what staff recommendation is?
So staff recommendation, even though it's, uh, the higher of the four would be the Catoctin Lighting Services. Because one, it is very exactly similar to what we have. It was remain, uh, uh, uniform with the other developments and, and other streets in town. Being Catoctin Lighting Services, we know their service. We know their warranties, their customer service is outstanding. They're local, which we all like to support local, um, great references and partnerships with Thurmont and Brunswick. So that would be the town's recommendation. Um, Mr. Click's rest recommendation. Yes, as town staff and mayor.
So there's a $75,000 match from the town, correct? That we have to put in to match.
And it was included when you approved this year's fiscal 24 budget. I, we did include that in your fund too, as a match for this project.
Right. Don't worry. I'm not, I'm not going to contest that. Don't worry. I'm not going there.
The money's already been allocated?
Yes.
For that cash match?
Yes. I was just trying to figure out, maybe I should lead with that. Um, so like if Catoctin is, uh, 266 and we have others that are 205, e- either way, the max we would pay out would be 75, correct? My.
We're just looking at our math real quick. Okay.
What's happening?
Okay. Yeah. Um, so yeah, so Michelle's correct. We would be short our match because, um, if you remember the breakdown. I'm seeing a breakdown. Yeah. The breakdown was, um, 227 thou, 228 for the purchase of streetlights and then 30,000 was allocated for installation. However, if you look at fund two, there's still monies available in fund two, department 30 that could be used to cover it. You could, um, also does that include the safety grant, safety grant? Yeah. So yes, you would be short, but there would be monies available in fund two, particularly in your, um, streets that could be moved to cover that. That's already in there. You wouldn't have to find the additional money.
So is that the only Catoctin, the only one that we would fall short on then? I'm sorry, this is a lot of.
No, that's fine. Yes, that would be the only one we would fall short on. And this is why we brought it to the board. Um, we had our recommendation, understanding that we would fall short. We wanted to give you options and basically the options came down to. And basically, the options came down to whether you want uniform it, everything to be uniform throughout town. I've known the goal will be to do the developments and other areas eventually, once the funding becomes available. Ultimately, that's the decision for for the board.
Oh, okay, so that open, that's another, that causes another question, so it, let's say, other developments come along, would we be looking to match? That, you know, use this lighting for future developments?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, yes, but we would be looking to continue the same.
Oh, okay. Okay, I misspoke.
Okay, I I I would be in favor of an option where we don't have to pay more than what we had originally allotted. I also like the idea of dark skies, but knowing too that it might go into residential areas and how close those lights are right to the people who live on Main Street, but just throwing it out there.
Any other thoughts from the board related to these items? Okay, so the question at hand therefore is choosing and Commissioner Bowman-Palit has brought right up the point with staff assistance that there would be a gap in the expense of the Catoctin Lighting Services offering, which would be a near identical match to what we currently have, but with a different bulb. What an LED waffle up top. Does Catoctin Lighting Services have a different offering or is the board intent on keeping the same style of fixture in place? Mr. Davis, I'll throw that down on your end, I'll come down, Mr. Sweeney, Mr. Ritz, does that, is that a concern of yours of keeping the same style that we have currently? Oh, I'm just wanting to draw, the the style doesn't really, I can take it or leave it either way, I I like the idea of staying local because of the availability of stuff, but I I just wish we could stay within our budget. Thank you, sir. Is there, is there any way we can do that, is there another, or is this, this is it? For example, does Catoctin offer the Washington or another less expensive one? Okay, okay. Yeah, I love the idea of staying local and staying with a good, a good company. Mr. Sweeney, any thoughts about style and we'll go from there?
The style doesn't matter to me, I like it to keep it all uniform through the whole town, once we get it all situated. But I like to have the the ones that if we get the same style now, they can still use the repair parts that we have from the other lights. Which will save us a lot of money, we won't have to worry about getting repair parts if we have some here. Like if a car knocks one off, they might be able to get a piece from this or a piece from that. Repair it.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Mr. Ritz?
Style. We've had the same style for thirty five years, sometimes change is good, sometimes everybody's comfortable with what we have. I believe the image of our streetlight, the silhouette of that has been used on multiple things, including town Christmas ornaments, maybe.
Yeah, and our current letterhead.
And the letterhead, so there are some changes to consider there, I mean, that's like minor, minor stuff, but I mean.
So it's not just the style that the this, there was only four companies use HADCO and had HADCO, that corrected me, and the other three were or were a lot more, so one of the things about being a HADCO product, that's what we've been using in town, that's what we're familiar with, that's they got the good warranties and the good service, that's why we put this one up there because it was the same style, but it was also because it was HADCO and it's something that the public work staff has worked with for many, many years, so.
Okay, thank you, the other items, no, okay, Commissioner Bowman-Palit's style, just to that question, is that, is that a concern?
I mean, some of them look similar to what's there now for Catoctin, some of them look similar, I mean, some of them look really, really different.
So the price point is your, your.
Yeah, I I think just looking at budget and and
So the Dorchester has a similar price point, sorry, excuse me, has a better price point for budget concerns, there's a similar aesthetic to what we're currently using. But it does not appear to be identical to what we're using. So and they're in Dallas, Texas, yes, they're we'll see the UPS guy, but yes.
That's another thing taken into considerations, the lead time on unfortunately, how many tractor trailers take out our streetlight poles? The downtime of of getting them back in and the shipping and all the things, you know, that add to the cost down the road. Again, this is why we brought it to the board, calculations, it's a thirty eight thousand dollar shortfall if going with Catoctin lighting.
Okay, any other comment? Would there be any wisdom to taking this back to these organizations and see if they're willing to bid again more competitively?
Because of the price point, it has to be, we would have to do the bid process all over again.
Okay.
Correct, Ms. Powell?
That sounds right, yes, okay, wow. All right, so, well, I had to ask. What is our current style, I want to get the name right, it's not the Dorchester. Here we are.
I think it has its style, right?
Which one?
The Catoctin Lighting.
Offering, we'll call the Thurmont style, now we'll call the.
Where would the shortfall come from?
The old Boston. This is what Catoctin Lighting is.
But where from fund two will the shortfall come from?
So I would have to talk to Cole, our accountant, but as you, as everybody knows, unfortunately, our planning consultant is not going to be here the entire fiscal year and will be leaving and we budgeted forty five thousand dollars for him in fund one. The board could ultimately make a budget transfer of the money that was allocated for the planning consultant to fund two for this project, I just need to confirm with Cole that that we can actually do that. And then.
Forty five thousand left.
We'll probably have, I don't know, Joey, where do you think we spent so far, five, maybe five thousand? So there would be forty thousand left that was budgeted, but let me see. One, two. There's thirty one thousand in that line item. Twenty five thousand in that line item. You have twenty five thousand eight hundred and nine, twenty five thousand two hundred and eighty nine in fund two under streets general. So. Anyway.
So if we do make a transfer of Mr. Kubix salary that we're not going to be tapping into over to the streetlights. It could also go to somewhere else too then, correct?
In fund two. Yes. You could also do it as part of your budget transfers that you do in January or February, it could be part of that instead of doing one separate transfer. To give us all time to sit down and look at what the audit comes up with and then what the reserve, what was left over from fiscal year twenty three, and then you'll have a better idea of where you are with any possible transfers to any fund.
Should we wait until we have that information from?
So I just was asking Michelle, um, so the purchase of these streetlights has to be done by the end of the year. We just have to purchase them, we don't have to have them in hand, correct? Because of some grant restrictions. I mean, I think we could do it in September, would you be okay with September, we could do it in September, September is just getting longer.
Or, I mean, what if it went to October, would that be terrible? Because October is wide open right now.
Yeah, I I think just, I think at the staff level, we would probably prefer to try to get it done in September, that way, in case anything else would happen, anything would pop up. We're not scrambling at the last minute, we can shoot, put it on the agenda for September, and if we need to table it or postpone it, we can always ask to do that.
Is there a motion to table this item at this time?
So moved, I'm fired.
Is there a second for the for Commissioner Bowman-Palit's motion?
I'll second to bring it to vote.
Thank you, sir, is there any further discussion regarding the motion? I understand where where Commissioner Bowman-Palit's coming from, you know, we're taking a beating on raising the water rates and then we're going to spend an extra thirty eight thousand dollars, that's what the people are going to see, that's, that's what they're going to see, whether it's right or wrong, that's what they're going to see. And I'm not against this, I because like I said, I like to stay local, I like to to make things easier for our workforce, but that's what we're up against, you know.
So Commissioner, what if you still table it, give you a chance to look at all your options or the four that were outlined, because the other ones that we didn't present, they were much higher, way over budget. Take a look at these options and then come back with your recommendation, because I know it's, it's a difficult decision, you know, you're going to put these streetlights up and the last thing we want to hear is they're ugly, they're hateful and they're going to be calling you guys, so I get that.
And I definitely believe they're needed, I I'm all about them being needed, it's just about how we go, we'll make sure we go the right way to get them, that's. Is there any further discussion regarding the motion made by Commissioner Bowman-Palit and seconded by Commissioner Ritz? Okay, so I'll call the vote, all in favor of tabling this, please say aye.
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 Aye, anybody against? The motion carries five to zero. So staff will turn to you, that's right. Staff will turn to you for a brief moment, so in summary, the intent therefore is our priorities to bring it back during the September meeting. And if that's not possible, certainly before the end of the year.
No later than October.
And and that should give staff enough time to consult with the town accountant regarding fund one, fund two, potential transfers, is that, is that a fair assumption?
Yes, and that'll give you guys a chance to take a look at anything, if you have any particular questions about the manufacturer that you're looking at. Please don't hesitate to email myself and Jimmy and Maddie and we'll do our best to answer those questions. And then we'll come back with some more answers in September.
Okay, last question for staff, does staff, do they have enough direction regarding this item?
Yes.
Thank you, okay, all right, so we now turn to our hearing item, if I'm not mistaken, let me yes, okay, so at this time, we intend to hold a public hearing, then consideration of ordinance twenty twenty three dash zero nine, which would add a new zone section seventeen point two six E D F D and economic development flex district, a floating zone, okay, so with that in mind, is there a motion to end the regular meeting and start a public hearing?
So move.
Thank you, is there a second for Commissioner Sweeney's motion?
I'll second that.
Thank you, is there any further discussion on the motion? Okay, if none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, anybody against? The motion carries five to zero, all right, so that carries that out, now, at this time, I call a hearing, we have the meeting to consider ordinance twenty twenty three dash zero nine which would add a new section seventeen point two six E D F E, economic development flex district floating zone. At this point in time, we turn this to staff and their presentation and we welcome our attorney Ms. Powell, thank you for joining us.
Hi, so the, like you said, the purpose of this is to allow an amendment to the current zoning map to create a new district that would function as a floating zone restricted to sites of twenty five acres or greater and general commercial conservation recreational industrial park and office research and institutional districts and it's intended to facilitate land development in town that would contribute to the town's economic growth while minimizing impacts on the surroundings.
Sure, so this is, this was presented to the planning commission in two workshops, two separate workshops. And then ultimately a public hearing for the planning commission and they made recommendations for a couple modifications to the last iteration that we had at the planning commission. And then after it came back to us, we made a few other suggested modifications for purposes of clarity and language frankly. So they were not, they, those were not substantive modifications, but just to make it clear and to clear up some things that I think could have been viewed ambiguously such as the open space requirement. Because at at one point, it looked as though it only applied to the three areas listed and we wanted to make it clear that the open space goes to the pervious surfaces that are maintained on the property and it's the total amount of the property that is the subject of the master plan to which the twenty percent reservation applies. And some of the other things that came out of the public hearing were to, because of some of the areas where the properties that are eligible for this certain type of flexible zoning, if you will, is is the entrance to to the community, and so when you're coming south on fifteen, it's elevated and you want to be able to preserve some of the scenic beauty and the Route fifteen, you know, the scenic byway elements as well, and so those items were also included in the proposed proposed determination, this is a flexible zoning method, it allows a greater control to some extent than you do in typical what we call Euclidean zoning, which has nothing to do with Euclid, but is named after a case. And so what would happen here is that if you have an applicant who who makes a presentation to include certain properties within this economic flex district, they have to come back to the planning commission, the planning commission does its thing, it does a review and analysis, the requirements for the application are iterated in the ordinance, the planning commission then reviews and makes a recommendation to this board, and so this board then has a say in how that property is developed and sort of the configuration, if you will, in the land base that are part of the proposal. And I note that the applicant's counsel is also here.
Do we want to invite the counsel to share a statement if he so chooses? It is.
Thank you, I know it's been a long evening and I know you also are going into closed session when we're done, so I'll try to be brief. And Leslie and Magila did a good job of explaining sort of the purpose. And Leslie and Magila did a good job of explaining sort of the purpose and intent. I'm about to get there. So for the record, my name is Bruce Dean. I'm an attorney with a law firm in McCurdy, Dean and Gradator in Frederick City. Also with me tonight are Andrew Brown, who is the broker for the applicant, which is SPT Land LLC. And also Devon Trout, whose father owns SPT is also here with me tonight. This text amendment came about when. Andrew came to me and said he had a client who owned a significant amount of land on the east side of US fifteen. In the town of Emmitsburg. And the town was just beginning to start its comprehensive planning process. But they wanted to take advantage of the economy where it is today and. Hopefully jumpstart the ability to develop this property within the town. And he asked me, you know, what some floating zones that we had worked on, what we could do up here in the town of Emmitsburg. And I do land use throughout Frederick County and we pulled a bunch of zoning. Ordinances from other municipalities and the two that we liked the best were the city of Frederick's mixed use floating zone. And then the town of Newmarket's economic flex floating zone. So what we did was we sort of mashed those together. The, the Newmarket one does not require a master plan while the city of Frederick's does. And we like that idea. It does, as Leslie said, gives the town much more control. And this gives greater benefits to the town. And then as Leslie said, we workshopped, well, first before we even workshopped it with the planning commission, we met. With Leslie, Chris Jakubiec and, and town staff to start working on, you know, what they liked and didn't like about the language. And then when we got it to a place where the staff and the applicant were good, then we took it to the planning commission. And then over the course of two workshops and a public hearing, came up with a lot of additional changes to it. But that's what's before you tonight and. The purpose is, as I said, to allow us or allow an applicant to apply for this floating zone. It would also allow the town to attract high quality employers and taxpayers. And also lastly, I think the, the best part for you all is it protects you by giving, having a lot of built in protections. It has a higher open space requirement than your Euclidean zone. It does have corridor enhancements along US fifteen. And it gives the town control over the rezoning. It is not, it is a completely. Optional on your part. If you don't like the plan we provide, if you just don't want to rezone the property, you just deny it. There's no. There's no by right in this, okay? We would have to, any applicant would have to make their case first to the planning commission and then ultimately to the board of commissioners. And if you are happy with it and want to apply it to a certain property, you can, but there is, it is completely discretionary for you. Sort of like an annexation and that you just can say no. And then also, lastly, there is language in there that if it's not being utilized. You can always take it away at a future comprehensive rezoning. So with all that said, we, you know, we agree with. Everything that you heard from the town attorney and from your town planner. And we've been working on this for several months with the town and we would like. To hear, to get your support tonight. And with that, Andrew and Devin and I are here to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, so board, I'll turn to you if you have questions for staff or for the presenters, Mr. Dean and. Mr. Brown and Mr. Trout. Here's your opportunity.
I have several, but I'm willing to let somebody else go first for a change.
She can go first. You're up.
All right. So the flex zone would essentially take. Everything highlighted on this, then is that, is that correct?
Now, those properties are eligible because they're, they're, we had originally put in our original application that it was fifty acre parcels. Only parcels that were fifty acres or larger would be eligible for this zone. And staff lowered that or suggested lowering that to twenty-five acres. And at the planning commission level, I'm not sure if Mr. if it was you or someone else, but asked for a map. So they could see what parcels there were in the town that would actually be eligible. I will note though that that map is a little bit deceiving in that it includes some institutional properties and those are not actually eligible. Under the language of the text amendment.
So what areas would be eligible so that I know what we know?
So the properties that are eligible have either B two, ORI, IP, or CR zoning today.
So we could cross off institutional.
Correct.
Okay. So.
CR, which is a holding zone that the town has. And then B two is your commercial zone and IP is industrial park. And I don't even see any ORI.
Wait, these two crossed on? Oh, yes, if you could do that. Sure.
Just to make sure we're looking at it correctly. Okay, so.
I would note that's a park, so it's unlikely, unlikely that you would reason that.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I think I have that right. So these are in consideration. So. Or I should wait. Let that hubbub down the line. No, I just want to make sure.
The floor is yours again.
So, and maybe this is a question more for Ms. Powell. Because I know we're on the cusp of the comprehensive plan, so. And the town had mentioned that this is going to be an ongoing process and we're going to solicit all this feedback. And have a dashboard where we could have ongoing discussions with residents. Would this be more appropriate to discuss as part of that comprehensive plan? It feels like we're putting the cart before the horse.
Yeah, no, the, the answer to that is that those are two completely separate things. Because in the comp plan, it, you may or may not revisit some of these designations. That's point number one. This allows applicants who meet the criteria that are specified here to make their pitch. And I will say that the comp plan process is long. Right, and, and I think that that was one of the, one of the issues that the applicant here was facing was that. You know, I mean, a comp plan process is easily a two-year process. I mean, they're really detailed and they're exciting.
Yeah.
And it's a great opportunity. But. That, one of the reasons for the timing on this particular proposal was to allow this, you know, the applicant. To, to proceed with possibilities in terms of marketing. But this would continue to exist regardless of the comp plan process.
So this wouldn't be something the comp plan would typically. Hash out as part of its process.
Right, no, because they're two, they're two completely separate vehicles. I mean, your comp plan is when you, it's sort of your aspirational goals. And things that you're looking at, people can come in during the comp plan and say, hey, you know, I'd like this property be considered to be, you know, zoned. You know. Village or whatever, and you can look at that during the comp plan process. But this is a separate ordinance that gives you more control in, in certain circumstances of the zoning processes. And allows the board, the board of commissioners to have more input onto the development of these large parcels of land.
I would also add that as a floating zone, it's not, it would not be something you could ask for as part of the comprehensive plan process.
Correct, and I, I think. I, I definitely see a benefit to it because I'm kind of torn. I see both sides. Like you definitely want to bring in as many different types of ideas when you're trying to grow your town as possible. And this will give us that greater flexibility. But at the same time, I feel like it does favor the private development in the sense of our public interest. Because our public doesn't really have any predictability of what, what this wild card could be. It could be here, 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 here. It's up to our planning commission and our board of commissioners to.
No, I, I see what you're saying, but it only applies to certain properties that have been designated in a certain way. So you're already only looking at your industrial, your B two, and then the CR holding pattern, if you will. The property that was. Right, but that, one of the things that's always kind of, well, since I've been town council perplexed me a little bit. Is how properties wound up in the CR district in the first place when they really, because they really were just parked there.
Well, and I, I think that's what's going to be confusing for our residents is if you do look and see that that's zoned conservation recreation, you're like, yay. But then if we're saying that's just a label because we didn't have anything else to put with it, that's very confusing for people in town.
Well, I think that the, the other answer to that is, is that this is a very public process. So when somebody comes in to apply for the economic flex district, you've got SCAS of public hearings. You've got the whole planning commission participation. You've got the public hearings there. And then you have the public hearings before the board of commissioners and, you know, I. I don't know that your residents would be surprised. I, I don't know. I mean, you know, I've been counsel since 2019. And I, and I was like, well, how did this happen in the first place? Beats me.
Right, I. Everything, that's the thing, like they always come after us afterwards.
It was designed to protect open space.
Yes.
And to present at that time according to those uses assigned to that type of use. An opportunity, so.
I understand how it.
Protect, protection. I mean, that was, that was the rationale at that point in time.
There is currently language in your zoning ordinance that says that the CR district is a temporary.
Right.
And.
Right, correct.
So our park would really need to be designated something else. Is there a different label that should be assigned to the Eugene Myers Park then? Because if that's just a temporary holding, then that shows no permanence to our park.
Don't disagree with that.
There is, there is a risk there, but as it's owned by the town and I think the arrangement of the handoff was deeded for park use. That's a lot, but you're right. For clarity of labeling and consistency of zoning, that might be a thing.
That might be something to look at in the comp plan.
Correct. Okay, can I throw four questions your way to staff? Okay, and you can answer them in any order, but here's where I'm going. Risks and advantages of the floating zone concept. Just, you know, edify us if you would be so kind. Are we able to stale date this? For example, if we see that there's not a action on the land regarding the zoning that we create. If we so, if we do so tonight, do we have the option to put a sunset clause in there for when it can be offered as that type of zoning? Because that was just alluded to a moment ago. And is there a recommendation that came from the committee?
What, the planning committee?
Yeah.
Yeah, so you go ahead and. Go in reverse order.
So I asked risks and advantages, recommendation of staff, a stale date, so. The ball is yours. I'll be quiet.
Okay, so basically the planning commission has made certain changes for clarifications. And that's what you have in front of you and. The staff just, you know, added some certain things like setback requirements, limitations to make things more clearer. And in terms of like a master plan not like expiring or whatnot. So in section. Sorry. Seventeen point twenty-six, one, zero, seven, zero. Sorry, I should probably just tell you page six or page fifty of sixty-one. So the master plan shall expire three years on the date of approval if the site plan or subdivision plan approval has not been obtained. So is that something you're referring to?
When I read it, I didn't see it. The recommendation piece. The staff and the planning board are comfortable with this concept?
Yeah.
Okay, and the other piece is just conceptually, what are the advantages of having floating zoning for our community?
Sure, so well, I'll start with the, with the advantages. And that is that you do have greater flexibility. You have more control and as Mr. Dean indicated, this is discretionary. And so if you don't like the plan, you don't have to approve it. And it's, and it's different. I mean, if you have the strict Euclidean zoning and somebody comes in with a plan that meets the criteria. The planning commission, and I mean, they're doing a site plan, they're on, you know, they have very little flexibility. And this gives you more flexibility. So if you want to have interconnectivity among the different land bays. Or if you want to have the ability to exercise, you know, more control on what you see when you're coming into Emmitsburg. Which I think was probably fairly high on everyone's list. You have a lot more flexibility with respect to that. You have the ability to look at, you know, the, the different types of uses. There's, there's been a lot of debate that we had about this concept called floor area ratio, which made everybody a little bit crazy. But it's, it includes vertical floors as well as just on the ground floor. So it's not like you're just doing the footprint of a building, but it's, it also goes up. There are height, height limitations. Then you do have those in your regular code. So I think all in all, it's, it's a pretty good deal in terms of if, if the applicant. For some reason does something wrong, they, there's a clause in there that says that that master plan approval get revoked. And it's also not in perpetuity. So if you have something that's sort of languishing around forever, you can re, redeal with this. The next time your comp plan comes up. So if you, you know, it, it's not irrevocable, if you will. I guess disadvantages would possibly be. Making it more political in that you have elected officials making planning decisions. As opposed to the planning commission and their appointed officials and, you know, they're. I guess less likely to get beaten up. If you will, you know, I mean that, I mean figuratively, obviously, but, you know, but. In the grand scheme of things, I think it's a great tool to have in your toolbox.
The only, the only thing I would also just add to that is a floating zone under Maryland law can only be approved by the elected officials.
Right.
You can't dedicate, delegate that responsibility to the planning commission.
So this is my last question. I'll turn it over to the rest of the board. The. I have to be careful how I ask this, but is it fair of me and appropriate for me to ask? A type of employer as opposed to a specific employer? Like what employment opportunities would this? Bring to the community that was referenced a little while ago? Yeah, I don't want to.
We're not, we're not creating. Okay, sorry.
Sure, so, so this isn't a use necessarily. It's, it's a, it's a zoning, it's a zoning technique.
Right, no.
And so you have these, you have the land bays and, and then you have the certain types of. Commercial industrial uses that are permitted within the economic flex zone. So the idea of course would be that a user would come in and they would, you know, hopefully be an employer.
Okay.
Because it's those types of uses that are included within what's considered the economic flex district. And it's called that for a reason.
So am I allowed to ask what type of employers we might see there if there's any?
You can certainly ask, but I don't know if anybody can answer that question.
Any types of employers that we might see?
The best ones we can bring to Emmitsburg.
Gray and amicable.
Well, it is, Leslie's correct. I mean, if you look at. On page three where it says principal permitted uses, it's basically all of your business uses are permitted. On page three where it says principal permitted uses, it's basically all of your business uses are permitted. And the the whole idea, the land bay thing is you might want retail, close to other retail, you might want. Industrial somewhere else, you might want offices, you know, it really just depends. And Andrew can probably answer this better than anyone in the room, but you know, the market changes. So the types of employers we might be looking for in twenty twenty three. Might be different than in twenty twenty five.
I just have a comment, after watching the planning. Commission meeting and getting the explanations from both councils. I'm very comfortable, I'm actually excited. I just think it gives us some, the boost that the town needs, that it gives us that flexibility, so I'm excited about it.
I, my, my only comment, like, as, as a member of the planning commission, I have. Been part of this, and I did abstain, by the way, so I could vote, vote tonight, so yes. And hats off to both sides of the aisle for the professionalism that.
It's been a pleasure.
And, you know, going through the whole process and explaining things, it made sense to me. If it can make sense to me, we're good, so, thanks.
Oh, so I guess just to clarify, that's looking at the. Principal of permitted uses, so it's basically everything listed under. What would be in the B two, the office research industrial. It's basically like kind of taking all those labels and throwing them together as one wild card, correct? And it's up to, yes.
It's not a, it's not a wild card. But that's sort of the whole point of the master plan part of it, that that component is that you'll know what the uses are and where they're going to go. And any change to that has to come back. So.
To come back to us, the board.
You, yeah, because you approve the master plan.
So then I guess if this goes through, the next step would be as part of the comprehensive plan to have that input on. The types of things that they want, no?
No, it's, it's a completely, the, the comp plan is completely separate than this particular ordinance. And so this ordinance allows. Property owners that have the requisite sized parcel and the requisite zoning. Right, to apply for the master. Excuse me, master plan approval. So your comp plan process is a completely separate process.
Okay, so in our current zones, you had mentioned, Ms. Powell, that. There would be more flexibility because. Like if somebody were to, a developer were to come in on what, like, let's say B two. And propose something that fits under that B two category. And it's something that as a town, we don't necessarily think is a good fit, but we would have no. Real way to say no, because it, we can't under that current zone.
Okay, so that's.
Her question was if it's zoned B two. And I come in with a McDonald's, which is a permitted use in B two. Planning mission has very little discretion to deny that. However, if we're coming in and we're showing B two or you don't want it, you just say, no, we don't want it there.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, and the, and the idea then is so that. You can have a, a part, a large, a plan for a larger parcel of land. And that you'll have some degree of certainty as to just what is going to go on in that certain parcel. And it allows you also to do a little bit of a mix and match too, so you can have. Compatible uses or supporting uses. That wouldn't necessarily be permitted if you went with the straight Euclidean zoning.
Because you're locked into that zone.
That's exactly right. So it might be that, you know, one of the things that was in there is there's daycare centers, so you might. Want to put a daycare center next to an office building. Those are pretty compatible uses. Office buildings also like to be near restaurants, you know. So it, it, it's, it's a planned process, but we think it works pretty well in the jurisdictions we, we do it, so.
And then in order to. Was. Was it the planning commission's? Recommendation to look at. Additional properties to fold into this?
Just, we, like I said, we had proposed fifty acres as a minimum lot size, and the planning commission suggested twenty five, and so that's what's in the ordinance.
So that's what it would open up, yeah, that's what I meant, it opens up because of the twenty five versus fifty. I know technically this would apply to the park, and everybody says with a degree of logic. But we would never do that. So is there any way to exclude that, or is that not legal because it's currently? It would fit the bill as.
Well, there, I think there's two reasons, two reasons you don't currently need to worry about it. One is that you own the park. So that it would be the town that would be taking a decision to divest itself of the park.
You'd have to be the applicant.
Right, right, yeah, so the town, and I don't know. The circumstances under which that would happen, just from practical standpoint. Okay, and because the CR zone is, serves two separate purposes. It's the, the conservation purpose, but it also has a separate stated purpose of being. This kind of a parking lot. Which is in the code, holding, yeah.
Don't call it a park.
Sorry, that was a poor choice of words on my part, but you know, it's, it's a, it's a. Right, I know.
That makes sense, I just wanted. I just want to make sure there's McDonald's in the middle of disc golf course or something. Know that the, the town would have to be the applicant in order for that to happen.
Sorry, at this time I turn to public comments. Is there anyone interested in providing public comments? Hearing none, okay. If no one has anything more to present, the public comment period is now closed, double checking. You guys are good. You guys? Okay, all right, okay, terrific. All right, so I thereby close the public comment period. All right, if no one has anything more to present, the public comment period is now closed. We now turn to the board for deliberations. Okay, so, board members amongst yourselves and or staff. The conversation turns to us. And our consideration for this, is everyone ready to move to vote, or does anybody want to carry the discussion further? Any more fact finding? It looks like we're ready to move to vote, is that fair? Fair to say, rather? Okay, great, all right, so. Ms. Willetts, for confirmation sake, procedurally. Okay, so, I have my step number eight, motion to end the public hearing and restart the regular meeting. And then we move to the vote. No issues there, all right, so does staff need time to switch, or will you all be staying as is, or? Okay, very good, all right, so, is there a motion to end the public hearing and restart the regular meeting? Is there a second for Mr. Davis's motion?
Second.
Thank you, motion's been made by Commissioner Davis, seconded by Commissioner Ritz, is there any further discussion? On this motion. Hearing none, call to vote, all in favor, please say aye. Anybody against? Motion carries five to zero to close this public hearing. All right, so we now. Move to reopen the meeting. And we don't need to vote to reopen the meeting, we are, we've reopened there, go, okay, all right, very good, so with that in mind. Link to page. Fifty-three of sixty-one. Yes, be it further resolved and acted in ordained that this ordinance shall take effect on the date, wait, no, that's not us. Is there a motion to accept ordinance series twenty twenty-three, number twenty-three dash zero nine? Thank you, is there a second for Commissioner Sweeney's motion? Thank you, motion made by Commissioner Sweeney, seconded by Commissioner Davis, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Anybody against, say nay? Motion carries five to zero, there you go. Congratulations, thank you, we look forward to doing business with you. Okay, we now turn to.
You guys drink a lot of water.
But this time we need to set the agenda for our next meeting.
I'm sorry, just say something.
I did, I'm sorry, at this time we move to set the agenda for our next meeting.
Okay, proposed items for September eleventh, agenda. Number one will be for consideration proclamation declaring September twenty twenty-three National Recovery Month. Number two, for consideration approval of stormwater deed of easement for seat and shrine museum entrance. Number three, for consideration approval of ordinance twenty-three dash eleven, which would make the entire town subject to the snow emergency plan. Number four, for consideration establish minimum bid price for tax sale of five oh nine East Main Street.
I'm sorry, minimum bid?
Establish a minimum bid price for tax sale of five oh nine East Main Street. Okay, five oh nine East Main Street is a property adjacent to five oh seven, the. The, the house that's falling apart. Across from the Creamery. It's the, it's the open lot next to it, owned by the same people. Five oh seven went to tax sale, it was already purchased, five oh nine did not go to tax sale. All right, number five, approval of rules and procedures for community legacy grant program for the Sustainable Communities Work Group for consideration. And then number six, six will be. Approval of bid for the downtown streetlight purchase for consideration. That's everything, I'm sorry.
Great, okay.
Sorry, we were drawing a map for, for the record of that area.
Yes, two separate lots.
If there is a need to take care of an administrative business item. I don't know if it needs to happen yet. Do I have time to come back to staff? With an administrative business item request? Like to add it to the agenda? I've not done this before, this is a new question to me.
Without knowing what the topic is, as long as it's not long and involved and takes, then that's fine. The agenda packet goes out that Thursday before September eleventh. And reminder that the Monday of that week would be Labor Day also, so we're on a short turnaround sooner than later would be preferred.
I anticipated having two quick parts. Okay, all right, very good.
I don't know if this is appropriate here, is there, is there a way that we could? A resident asked me about street signs for the forty-eight hour consecutive parking, if that can be looked at or. I don't know if that's something we need to talk about, or what the process might be to add some signage there.
I mean, so the forty-eight hours without, I mean, without making it in, into an agenda item or anything, forty-eight hours applies to the entire town. So I guess the question would be, are we going to put signs throughout the entire town?
I thought in the code it's specified.
No, it's the entire town, you cannot park on a public road in the entire town, so it applies everywhere. We did put it in the recent newsletter, it's on the website, we actually posted to Facebook. You know, obviously, it's your responsibility, you know what the rules are in your town and your state and your county. My comment would be, we can't put signs up on everything.
So if I park on Mountaineer's Way for more than forty-eight hours, I could be ticketed?
Technically, yes.
So can we revisit that? Because I think a lot of people.
So, so the idea between the forty-eight hours is to keep. It's, it's designed more for a main street, a, a public way, things of that nature. To keep traffic moving on Main Street, so if somebody's not parking in front of, say, Commissioner Davis's house for a week on end and. You know, loses access to his house, or to any business to keep the traffic turning over, that's the idea behind it. A lot of municipalities and cities have forty-eight hours, that's what they say. Now, do we typically write in your developments for forty-eight hours? No, unless we get complaints. We've had a few complaints over in the Brookfield Pembroke area where cars are sitting for days on end and not moving. Makes the residents, make the neighbors happy, it's a tool. To use.
Could there be something as simple as, like, one could, for example, when the code. Enforcement officer would peek his head into the businesses and say, hey, is anybody expired? So, could there be a little note on the car saying, you know, we've noticed you here for forty-eight hours, can you? So to give them some kind of heads up as, as residents get used to that.
So we do issue warnings. We do, Kadim, and there's something we developed back before Amy and Zach departed was to, to have the ability to issue warnings. Particularly on things where people may not know what the code is. So he could have issued a warning in this case, you know, as we talked, car had been sitting there for seven days, the homeowner was upset. She was ready to ticket, which she can, but we typically write warnings for first offenses, and when he puts it in, we can tell.
Yeah, it just seemed like to me there was no attempt for. The resident, the homeowner to reach out to him or vice versa, so like there was no.
Well, I'm sure he didn't know who, I mean, he was parked, I guess this, this person lives in the. Whatever block further down Main Street, so I don't think he even knew who it was. I don't know.
I, I've just, I've just in favor of warnings, just as we, as we.
We do. We did not have warnings for the longest time, it's something we just started about six months ago.
Would you? Bring this back for a discussion item in October? No, no, it doesn't have to be, but I'm saying, is this, do you feel there needs to be discussion in order at some point in time to lead to action? For like a policy, or do you think, or do you have confidence in what staff is doing now, that's procedurally appropriate? Like using it as a tool and giving themselves the latitude to get warnings.
We do write warnings.
I said that.
But not in that case, though.
No, that was just, he chose not to write a warning, he'd been there for seven days, had a complaint. It was Main Street, had it been maybe off the beaten path, he probably would have given a warning, it's discretionary.
That's where, that's my question.
Well, we don't have a policy to say you must write a warning, or you must write a ticket.
Yeah, okay, all right.
Yeah, I know he does. I know, Kadim goes well beyond anything that we've ever had.
It, it's just something that we don't typically ticket unless there's a complaint.
No, we've.
I mean, has there been, because I, I'm looking at the police reports and it says.
They don't issue those. Park, they don't issue parking tickets, so they would not have anything on their police report. We do write forty-eight hour tickets. Especially on Main Street, high traffic areas. Yeah, so the, the new handheld device, it can, and can chalk tires, or you can also physically go out and chalk them as well.
So that, the idea is just don't, don't have a complaint called on you.
Yeah, that's probably in your best interest, I mean. The idea is to actually not park for forty-eight hours in the same place, I mean, that's the. That's our bottom line, I think, but it's. I don't mean to be an arbiter here, I'm sorry for interjecting, I think giving staff this, this latitude. Serves our community well.
I, I agree, and in, in favor of the community, I just think that's something that some people didn't know. So as we build awareness, it, it would be nice to have some kind of buffer in between.
Regarding the agenda for the nine eleven, September eleventh, twenty twenty-three town meeting. Is there a motion to accept the agenda as presented? Thank you, is there a second for Commissioner Sweeney's motion? Thank you, motion's been made by Commissioner Sweeney, seconded by Commissioner Davis, is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye, anybody against?
Sorry, aye.
The motion carries five to zero. Okay, is there a motion to close the meeting? Thank you, is there a second for Commissioner Sweeney's motion?
Second.
Thank you. Motion's been made by Commissioners, we need seconded by Commissioner Boon and Pollitt. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to nothing. The meeting closes at. Ten fifty?
Did you take the vote to close the meeting for the close executive session?
No, I did not.
Yeah. So you need to vote to close the executive, close this.
Okay.
To go into close executive session.
All right.
You need to read your little form.
I am here to read the form.
Meanwhile, staff's gonna go out and close the doors.
Okay. At the close of the August twenty first, twenty twenty three town meeting, no closing statement. I make a motion to close the August twenty first, twenty twenty. Read that if you would, please. I have to do the banging thing.
He's wanting to make.
Correct. Yep.
I make a motion to close the August twenty first, twenty twenty three meeting. At nine fifty PM for a closed executive session to discuss legal advice. The board of commissioners will not be meeting in another open session after the closed session has ended.
Is there a second for Commissioner Ritz's motion? Thank you. Motion's been made by Commissioner, read seconded by Commissioner Sweeney. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Staff, we turn to you.
Okay. Give us a few minutes to.